All right. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of October 18. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, council members Asatriyan.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Divine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Kasakian.
Here. Please rise and join me in saluting our flag and then remain standing for the invocation delivered by Clerk Kabajin. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Tongva people. As we gather here today, let us set the intention of being ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, and of justice and compassion, and exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the October 18, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Wednesday, October 12, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right. Thank you very much. And let's have item number three, A.
Three, item number three, presentations and appointments. A, Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, October 25, 2022, by Deputy City Manager John Tachalian.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, members of the City Council. Next week, we have one special meeting in the afternoon. That'll be a report from our Public Works Department regarding the citywide bicycle detection technology report. In the evening, we have two consent items. They'll both be, again, from the Public Works Department. The first will be regarding adoption of plans and specifications for the Dunsmore Park Improvement Project, and the second will be adoption of plans and specifications for fiscal year 2223 Americans with Disabilities at curb ramp installations. We also have two action items that evening. At 8:00 a.m. will be community development regarding a list of recommendations for streamlining the historic district designation process. And the following action item will be from Water and Power regarding a report on solar energy on city-owned properties. That'll be seeking council's authorization for the general manager to issue a request for proposal for engineering procurement and construction method for the project. We'll also have two hearings that evening. The first will be regarding an appeal to sustain the planning, hearing officers' approval of setback and standards variance for a project at 521 Nolan Avenue. And the final hearing that evening will be an extension of the interim emergency ordinance prohibiting developments with new and conversion of existing drive-through waiting lanes.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item.
Next is consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Would anyone like to make the motion or pull any of the items? Do we have any cards from the public?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
There is no desire to pull any of these items, and it doesn't look like there is. There's a motion by Councilmember Divine and seconded by Councilmember Najarian. Let's have roll call on the consent items.
Councilmembers Asatriyan.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian.
Yes. Thank you. What is next?
Next is City Council and staff comments.
Who would like to go first?
I had a very interesting Thursday last week. I got a chance to meet President Biden when he toured a metro subway station under construction in Westwood. And probably the most common question I was asked is, does he still have it together? Yes. Yes, he still had it together. And he's still got that spark in his eye and that spring in his step. And I was very grateful for that incredible opportunity to meet him and speak to him a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Any of my colleagues, no one else? Okay. Well, it's good to be back. I'm sorry I missed last week's meeting. I want to thank Mayor Protem Najarian for running the meeting. I was out of town visiting one of our sister cities, as well as visiting some hydrogen powering facilities and fueling stations in Japan. And I was initially supposed to be out of town the week we were dark, but then it came to our attention that that was, we were going to have a council meeting the week of Yom Kippur. So we had to switch that, and unfortunately, the scheduling was such that I was not able to be here for the meeting. But I am back now, and we are marching forward. And we're marching forward with Tech Week. Anyone from staff going to speak on Tech Week? If not, I can talk about it. Do we have, no? Mr. Calvert, did you want to tell folks about it?
Excuse me. Actually, last week, we did make an announcement regarding some of the upcoming events. But today was really kind of our big official kickoff for Tech Week, today, tomorrow, Thursday. A number of really exciting events going on. We have a really great speaker panel for women in tech. Tonight was Meet the Funders. We'll have a number of events, so we encourage everyone to visit our website, glendeltechweek.com, register for any of the events that you might be interested in, and come check out some of the kind of local innovators and the local creativity here in the tech scene in Glendale.
Thank you. And that's exactly where we were just now. We were at a Meet the Funders event sponsored by the Children's Hospital of Los Angeles Kids X Digital Health Accelerator. And tomorrow, there's events from 10:00 a.m., 3:00 p.m., 6:00 p.m. You can go on the city's website and find out more about it. Of course, going out throughout the week, we have building and growing an AI cloud company. The Verdugo Job Center Employment Fair is from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. tomorrow at the Glendale Central Library. And of course, as Mr. Calvert mentioned, Women in Tech and Media, a panel discussion at the Fonexa headquarters at 505 North Brand. This is about, again, growing our tech ecosystem, making sure that we're helping create the jobs of the future, and providing opportunities both to companies and our residents. And it's great to just basically have events again post COVID. It was very well-attended, the event that Mr. Galanion and I just left. I also want to mention that this weekend, I went to the Korean Cultural Celebration Festival at the Shosean Whispering Pine Tea House in Glendale. That was sponsored by the Friends of the Tea House. It was a very nice event. Thank you to the organizers and all the participants. And lastly, I was contacted by a couple of the residents at 333 Monterey Road. It's a senior housing complex. I understand there's some renovations being done there. And one of the residents contacted me, and I will pass along that person's contact information. They wanted to know whether it was being done with permits. They had some concerns. I guess they had an issue with a laundry facility on premises that had been out of commission for some time. So I'll pass that information all along to you, Mr. Calvert, and if you could have your staff look into it, to Mr. Galanion and Mr. Calvert. All right. That is all that I have so far. What is next? Do we have any staff comments?
No, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Next?
Next is community event announcements. We have one speaker card.
Okay. Mr. Mohal, is this a portion you wish to speak at? I'll take that as the yes.
Good evening, council members. Missed you last week, Mayor Kasakian.
Missed you.
I'd like to talk about promises made and promises I hope will be kept. During the campaign elections, several council members said if elected, they would agendize council districts. Council districts. And I'm waiting to hear that come out tonight by one of these council, one of our council people. It would be really nice. The other thing which has been a pet peeve of mine for many years now is the accountability of the Americanet brand. I contend the city taxpayers are losing money, and nobody on council wants to agendize it. But during election campaigning, when they were running for elections, some council people said, hey, you know what, candidate, I'm going to agendize that if I'm on city council. Would like to hear that tonight. I believe the taxpayers of Glendale need to have an accountability of the Americanet brand. Yes, it's very pretty. It's a very nice place to go. But who's making money at it? We know Mr. Caruso is. The taxpayers of Glendale spend millions of dollars to buy the land, eminent domain. Where's the money that the taxpayers are supposed to get? Don't say, look at the website. The city website doesn't say a darn thing about that. That's smoke and mirrors. We know that. Let's have an actual accountability. Some of you council people, when running for city council, said you were going to agendize this item. Tonight would be a great evening to step up to the plate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And this is also for, may we have Ramela Inari, you can address the council. Please approach the podium.
Hi. Good afternoon, council members and mayor. As many of you know by now, there are demonstrations, demonstrations are going on in Iran, in city of Iran. And there are courageous Iranian men and women are fighting there for their rights. And there are women are being killed in the streets of Iran, and even there are minors in there that are being killed. And I want to show my solidarity towards Iran and their and vision victory. And actually, I want to talk about myself a little bit. I was born and raised in Iran. And I speak three languages. And one of them is English, which we can explain that by illiteracy in English. So, well, since, but I'm very much familiar with Persian literature and poems, like poets like Hafiz and Molana, which are privileged to speak Persian language and enjoy their poems. And as well as Armenian literature, which I adore, poets like Baris Sevak and Yarashit Charents. So that explains once again if my English language a problem. And another thing is, it's about 500 units of affordable housing that are being built. And I did some research on that. And then I came across the qualification of those units, who's going to be qualified for. And then just so that the drafts for this program is for people who, there's income limit between 24,850 per year and 66,000. I want to say, I don't, among those people, I don't have $25,000 in annual income. So that means I'm not going to be qualified for this program or this housing, affordable housing. You call it affordable housing, but still, that's your definition of affordable housing. And I'm still left behind if I were lucky to win the lottery. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there are no comments from my colleagues, let's move on to the next item. And Mr. Mohal, I will say that I have said that I have supported council districts. I continue to support council districts. When the time is appropriate, we will have that discussion. Obviously, we're not going to have it this evening. So that will, and we've had that conversation in these chambers a number of times. So to everything, there's a season. What is next?
Next is item seven, Adoption of Ordinances. Community Development Regarding Adoption of Extension of Interim Urgency Ordinance Number 5978, prohibiting issuance of entitlement and/or permits for hotels in the downtown specific plan area of the city, introduced by Councilmember Brotman on September 27, 2022. Item continued from City Council Meeting of October 11, 2022.
All right. Mr. Galanion, staff?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, this is, as it was read into record, adoption of ordinance that was introduced. We don't have a presentation, but Mr. Calvert is available to respond to any questions, council.
Are there any callers or cards on this item?
There are no callers or cards.
Well, the item was introduced by Councilmember Brotman on September 27. Is there a motion and a second?
I'll move the item unless there are any comments.
I have a question and a comment for Mr. Calvert. The staff is working on amendments, alternatives, et cetera, to the ordinance for hotels. When do you suppose that that would be complete?
We would like to be able to bring back a series of alternatives to council in December or early January, depending on the council calendar.
Thank you. Thank you. And I know the last week I voted against the moratorium, but because staff, it will not be a year, and so I will be changing my vote to approving this. I'll second that.
So motion, and the second has been made for the adoption of this urgency interim urgency ordinance. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, council members Asatriyan.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian.
No.
Mayor Kasakian.
Yes. And it's, by the way, an extension for the interim urgency ordinance. All right. What is next?
Next are action items. Action item A, Community Development Regarding Project Development Team Formation to Update the Citywide Bicycle Transportation Plan, the Creation of Vision Zero Policies and Development of an Outreach Plan. One, Motion Authorizing Staff to Form a Project Development Team to Update the Citywide Bicycle Transportation Plan and Develop Vision Zero Policies and Provide Direction for Developing of a Robust Outreach Plan.
All right. Mr. Galanion?
Yes, Mayor Kasakian, members of City Council. This item is a very important next step in the development of the citywide bicycle transportation plan. That's been in the works for a while. Last time we updated was a very long time ago, so it's definitely overdue. The report today will include the formation of a project development team, as well as creation of policies to be included in Vision Zero, and a comprehensive outreach plan. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Calvert, Director of Community Development, for the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and city council members. We are here this evening to get some feedback from City Council regarding the project development team and any public engagement strategies that the council may wish to see in this project. We thought this would be a good opportunity before we develop that public engagement plan and that outreach plan, that we come and solicit that feedback, and if there are any kind of particular interests you may have or ideas on how we can move forward with that. So those are really kind of the two main asks we have this evening. Very, very brief presentation. But as mentioned, we were looking for feedback on the composition of that team. We're not looking for specific members. Note, this is a note-and-file report, but any feedback that you may have in terms of certain organizations, certain interests that you may like to see on there. You'll notice in the report and in the slides, there are a list of recommendations now. So any kind of feedback that council could offer on that would be appreciated. And then also, again, just looking for that feedback and input on those public engagement strategies and any new ideas that we may be able to employ here to reach even further than prior projects in the prior plan. So that project development team is going to be really a community-driven task force. Their goals and their objectives will be to provide input and feedback on the strategies for both the update to the bicycle transportation plan, but also Vision Zero policies. We saw an opportunity here to be able to identify some efficiencies by pairing these two up together and working with the same project development team. That's going to include the routes that will be identified as part of that plan, any potential designs, bicycle amenities that may go along with it as well, but also the interface between other modes of transportation. So that's kind of a key element here, being able to link to transit, providing safe access for cyclists, still not impeding traffic, obviously, and then working with our citywide pedestrian plan that was most recently adopted. As part of that project development team, we're also looking for impact or feedback from businesses, from residents, in terms of what that may mean for surrounding uses, businesses, neighborhoods, things of that nature. So as you can see on this slide here, we have a pretty robust kind of outline that we've identified in terms of participants. This spans our own boards and commissions that we here have at the city of Glendale, continuing our commitment to creating safe routes to schools with our school district, but also looking at other interests there from both, you know, realtors, the Healthy Community Coalition, Environmental Coalition, obviously, as we're looking at sustainable transportation, and then trying to reach broader than just our homeowners groups, but also incorporating in the tenant union and recognizing the renters that are predominantly in South Glendale. You'll see three more off to the side there. These are regional partners that we intend to include on this. This is very important because if we are kind of expanding our bicycle transportation network, ensuring that we're creating safe and efficient connections to our surrounding communities, looking at this on a regional level, as well as a citywide level, and then recognizing that those regional connections can also help enhance our opportunities to identify funding in the future for implementation. So we have Los Angeles County Public Health, LA Metro, and SCAG, all as representatives as part of that working group. So this is a pretty large group. It's a pretty robust group. We are kind of getting to that kind of critical mass point where we may, you know, grow a little bit too large, but we wanted to kind of hit pause for a minute, get feedback from the city council on these participants, and any other additional ones that you may wish to see.
Question?
Yes.
Before we go on, can you back? I'm just, on my desk is an exhibit one, Proposed Project Development Team, and there's a list. It's not consistent with this. I mean, there may be a couple differences.
I believe the exhibit was actually incorrect attachment. What's embedded in the report is the list that matches the slides here.
Okay. So that's, so this is not the official, because Glendale Environmental Coalition is not on here. But I do see Kiwanis on here, and I don't see them on this list.
We had made some changes when that exhibit was created, and then when we put this together for the actual report and the presentation, you'll notice that Glendale Environmental Coalition is part of that now.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Sorry, I didn't have my mic on. While we're on the development team, that possibly a rep from Planning Commission should be on this. And I just received an email, Drive Safe Glendale is another entity here in the city that I think should be part of this development team. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if, since we're on that, can I also, because I was going to mention Drive Safe Glendale, thank you for that. I'm wondering if we could maybe see if there's a, like a parent-teacher association, kind of parent group representative that we can bring on to this as well. And you may be coming to this, but I'd asked you in the briefing if you could tell us a little bit about the makeup and the size of the team for the pedestrian plan, because what I've heard is that went very well. And, you know, I don't know if that was a smaller group than this, a little, this, you know, we worry about something becoming too cumbersome if there are too many cooks in the kitchen. So if you could maybe address that a little bit, that'd be great.
Correct. So the pedestrian plan, that working group, was a little bit smaller than this. In some of the documents that we have, you'll notice that it also includes a number of internal staff members as well from various divisions and departments. There will be an internal stakeholder working group that will also be constructed, so that'll consist to police, fire, parks, public works, community development. But the overall kind of external facing panel was a little bit smaller. Some of the organizations that you see on this list were not quite as active back when the pedestrian plan was originally developed. So we thought this would be a good opportunity, and looking back at the original bicycle transportation plan, to include more groups. What we heard from some organizations and some groups is that they wish they would have been a part of it, or they wish they would have had more opportunities to get engaged. We saw this as a good opportunity to still grow this list, with kind of still keeping it within those boundaries of being manageable.
Okay, so you're not worried that we've got too many?
Not yet.
Mr. Calvert, I counted 23 participants so far.
Including the staff?
No, excluding staff.
Yeah. I mean, that would be my only worry here, but, okay.
Any other comments, questions?
One more quick slide here in terms of public engagement and obtaining some feedback from council here. We'll have a number of different approaches in terms of reaching the broadest audience possible. We'll have community meetings, pop-ups, we'll create a project website, looking at digital and print communication to ensure that we get the word spread as far as we possibly can to get the most and the best possible feedback for this project. This will obviously be multicultural, multi-language, but we also wanted to take this time to ask City Council, are there any certain initiatives, areas of focus, ideas that you may have that you would like to see us incorporate as part of this public engagement plan? That way, we can get out in front of that and include that in the plan as part of the project. That concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions and any feedback council may have.
Okay, any comments, questions? Go ahead. Councilmember Asatriyan?
I'm not going to go through the long list of items that had suggested when you guys first brought Vision Zero. I think you still have the notes from that, just to save time. But one additional recommendation I would make is, when you're doing the community meetings, to reach out to larger community-based organizations and actually partner with them where the community meeting is hosted by them in partnership with the city. I think in the past, we've done that with Glendale Water and Power when we were having the electricity rate increases, as an example. And when community organizations are the ones actually hosting, there tends to be a larger turnout. So that would be my only addition to that previous list.
All right. Any other who else would like to comment?
Well, yeah, I'll just, just one thing, and I thought Councilmember Asatriyan would mention this because she's so adept at social media, and I'm not, but...
Part of the long list I had given last time, so.
Okay, okay, yeah. I would assume that, you know, now, unlike probably in 2012 when we first did this, or even in 2017 when we did the pedestrian plan, there are new, you know, platforms, TikTok, Instagram, of course, and all the rest of them. TikTok, Instagram, of course, and all the rest of them, so that we can reach some of the, maybe the younger audience that doesn't typically get engaged. If we could maybe find clever and creative ways, maybe a TikTok video with some council members dancing around or something like that. I don't know. No, never mind that, never mind. But something to get, something to get our, our younger folks out and, and participating.
Okay. Councilmember Devine?
Okay. Thank you. Yes, it was a good report, very important. Vision Zero is obviously something that we've heard about. I've, I've heard about it for almost going on, feels like 10 years. We, we talk about it and it seems like this elusive goal as to where we want to be as a city. Unfortunately, almost every year, we have a, you know, tragic accident or even at times a fatality of, of collision between our motorists and people who just want to be able to use our streets, our sidewalks and, and get from point A to point B. I do want to stress that there are certain things that we can do in addition to these meetings and the community feedback that really, I don't know how much it requires for us to meet with folks to do these. And one of them is when I first got on council and I spoke about this, I know there was a report that came back about it, but, you know, we need to, it's, it's, everything is connected and, and mobility is not just pedestrian or bicycle, but even just using buses, right? It's about getting less people to rely on their cars for transportation, less around the city. And for us to lead by example, so one of the things I've asked City Manager Galanian to look into, and I'd like to see us work more earnestly with our legal department to remove any obstacles to making this happen, is to have bicycles in our, in our vehicle pool for staff to be able to utilize electric bicycles as well as, I don't know, not to do that if our employees are using them, that starts setting the proper tone. You know, I was, I was, I haven't been pushing on this until I recently realized that Pasadena has bicycles in their vehicle pool for employees to use. So that's one of the things we have to make sure that we have happen. It should not be something that takes a year to do. It should not, right? It's, bicycles are not expensive, and certainly if we put them out there, there will be some that will use them. I promise to use them, maybe not for long distances. I still have to get into shape, but people will use them, number one. Number two, we need to make sure our, the use of our buses is more inviting, and I brought up the issue of bus shelters. And I know we had discussions and we brought up costs, but unless we make our bus shelters more inviting, unless we post the schedule of the buses at every single bus stop, physical posting versus just relying on people who have smartphones, you know, in Tokyo, a city that is probably at the far edge of advancement in terms of technology and, and other innovations, they still have in their very efficient subway system, the schedule of when the subway cars are supposed to arrive and when the next one is coming, posted in, on a paper, in printed letters and numbers for people to see the times. And we don't have that yet at our bus shelters in Glendale. You know, we need to make sure that happens. And these are things that, you know, we don't need to have focus groups for. It can happen, it should happen, and it starts setting the right tone. So those are my comments. So I wish you guys best of luck with these meetings and I'll entertain a motion for us to move forward. Oh, wait, do we have a caller?
Mayor Kusakian, we have one caller on this item.
We did not have a caller earlier, so I apologize. I wasn't trying to ignore anyone. Let's go to the phones.
Not a problem. We have James DeCarli on air. James, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, City Council. Sorry, this was something that I just came across with the bicycle safety plan, just because we, I'm a business owner, as many of you know, and work with Glendale Riverside Rancher, and we currently would be very interested in working with the coordinators of this plan because a large portion of the, we wanted to make sure that the health and safety of horses where riders share the public streets in the Riverside Rancher are also taken into consideration when there's bicycles around, because that can be quite hazardous for the cyclist as well as the equestrian. So our website is saveglendaleversider.com. Please make a note of that and you can contact, many of the City Council members also have my contact information as well. And I just wanted to leave that comment. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
No other callers or cards?
No other callers or cards.
Okay. I would, I would definitely agree with the caller and I see Councilmember Devine nodding her head in agreement as well, so let's make sure that our equestrian communities are represented as well. So that's it. I will defer to my colleagues to make a motion.
Remove the item.
Item has been moved.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Bratman. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. May we have 8B read into the record, please?
Yes. Action item B, 8B, is Public Works Regarding Bicycle Facility Alternative Options for the La Crisena Avenue Rehabilitation Project. One, Motion Selecting a Bicycle Facility's Alternative for the La Crisena Avenue Rehabilitation Project.
Okay. Galanian?
Yes. Mayor Kusakian, Member City Council, this project is one of those interesting projects that don't come around too often. We haven't done one of these lane repurposing projects in a very long time, and this project is essentially designed to improve vehicular safety for motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists, and staff has done an extensive, above and beyond the ordinary amount of public outreach to the community because of the sensitivity of some of the elements of this project. And we are here after having gone through the Transportation and Parking Commission and with their recommendation. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Sarkis Aganesian, our Deputy Director of Public Works slash City Engineer, for the presentation of this item.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, Mayor Kusakian and members of City Council. By way of project background, Public Works completed a comprehensive pavement management program in 2021, and La Crisena Avenue was recommended for pavement rehabilitation. In addition, council direction to increase active transportation modes as well as current Vision Zero initiatives, both statewide and citywide, directed us to examine the corridor in further detail. Additionally, as of July 1st, 2020, California state requirements to reduce greenhouse gases and develop multimodal networks through the use of vehicle miles traveled lent itself naturally well to the improvements proposed for this project. Let's take a look at the existing conditions of the street on La Crisena Avenue. La Crisena is a 1.6-mile major arterial street and contains two travel lanes in each direction with on-street parking predominantly allowed on both sides throughout the corridor. It is important to state that most of the corridor is residential with a small commercial northern section. There is a host of traffic signals. Fremont Elementary School is located within the community on Paloma Avenue, and the street is sandwiched between the Verdugo Wash and North Verdugo Road for the southerly portion. Most importantly, and to focus your attention on this critical current condition, the street experiences high corridor speeds. The posted speed limit is 40 miles per hour, and the 85th percentile speed, which is the predominant speed that most of the vehicles are currently traveling, are approximately five to six miles higher than the posted speed limit, presenting a speeding and safety issue throughout the corridor that we would also like to address with the improvements as part of this project. Let's take a look at the proposed scope of work now. As I indicated earlier, this is primarily a street rehabilitation project that consists of your standard street rehab elements such as street pavement, concrete pavement, ADA infrastructure improvements, sewer, and other substructure improvements. This project also has two critical scope elements, the first being the use of cool pavement technology in front of Fremont Elementary School, and the main element being the installation of a bicycle facility. These are two critical elements based on council direction, one, to reduce the heat island effect, and two, to improve bicycle facilities based off of the bicycle transportation plan to improve active transportation modes throughout the city and on this corridor. If council provides direction to proceed with our recommended alternative, construction is anticipated to begin in spring of 2023 and lasts approximately six months. Before you is the project location map. The corridor is La Crisena Avenue between Montrose Avenue to the north and North Verdugo Road to the south. As part of the project, as I indicated earlier, we, a critical component was installing bicycle facility infrastructure. As part of the bicycle transportation plan, La Crisena Avenue was identified as a study corridor. Therefore, we conducted a bicycle transportation study to determine what alternatives exist. The study showed that there's two alternatives for this corridor. Alternative one being the recommended alternative as a Class II bicycle facility dedicated and protected, and the second alternative was a Class III bike route or a shared roadway marking otherwise known as sharrows throughout this presentation. Alternative one would consist of the installation of a class true, Class II colored bike lane by repurposing the roadway. This entails reducing the travel lanes to one lane in each direction and adding protected buffered bike lanes on each side of the roadway. It also consists of installing a center-running two-way left turn lane. Alternative two would include the installation of sharrows or shared roadway pavement markings, and in the bottom right of your corner, it's the B-type green sharrows that would be installed. Here's an alternative comparison, side by side, for the northerly portion of the corridor between Montrose Avenue and Shirley Jean Street. For alternative one, as you can see in the top right, the travel lanes will be reduced to one lane in each direction with a center-running turn lane and protected bike lanes on both sides. For alternative two, the roadway alignment will stay the same, two lanes in each direction with the addition of the shared roadway pavement markings. This is an alternative comparison for the southerly section of the roadway between Shirley Jean Street and North Verdugo Road. The predominant difference between the northerly section and the southerly section shown here is the curb-to-curb width. The southerly portion is approximately 10 feet smaller or narrower, and that, that necessitates for our recommended of alternative number one, to install a protected bike lane on the west side or for southbound travel, and to study further on the east side to see how much of a protected bike lane we can install. Alternative two, the sharrows alternative, again keeps the travel lanes in two lanes in each direction and installs the shared roadway pavement markings. As part of the bicycle study, we also conducted a roadway safety analysis. As part of the roadway safety analysis, a corridor collision analysis was conducted. The 10-year crash history between April 2010 and 2020 showed approximately 154 collisions per the SWITTERs or the statewide traffic record system. There's multiple types of collisions on this corridor, as you can see in item number two, but the majority of these intersection collisions consist of broadside and rear-end collisions. Broadside collisions would potentially be remedied with the removal of a travel lane, and rear-end collisions would potentially be remedied with the installation of a center-running two-way left turn lane. A safety benefit analysis was also conducted as part of that traffic study, and it showed, according to Caltrans Local Road Safety Manual, that road repurposing and lane repurposing projects result in an estimated reduction of 30% in collisions along the corridor. For the recommended alternative, this would equate to approximately 92 less accidents over a 20-year period. And again, according to the Caltrans Office of Economics Analysis, shows about each accident costing approximately $185,000, which equates to roughly $17 million in, in cost. Let's discuss the lane repurposing study takeaways for a brief moment. In regards to alternative one, the installation of the Class II bicycle lanes, this would result in an overall decrease in total vehicle trips. There would be a potential decrease in vehicle miles traveled along La Crisena Avenue predominantly and some of the other major streets. There would, however, be a potential increase in vehicle miles traveled along some of the side streets along the corridor and in the neighborhood, and a potential increase in vehicle miles traveled along the freeway where traffic should naturally be going. There may be a potential increase in congestion man, in congestion levels, but they will be manageable according to the study. There would, of course, be an increase in other modes of transportation, active transportation, and mitigation measures may be required, and the Public Works Department is on standby to study them if necessary and required. And of course, there will be a potential reduction in the 85th percentile speeds. For alternative two, there won't be a change in total vehicle trips or vehicle miles traveled. There would be no additional active transportation improvements, and there would be no impact to the 85th percentile speed. So now I'd like to talk about the public outreach that we've conducted over the course of the last eight months. So because of the critical nature of this project and as directed by council, we completed extensive outreach efforts over the last eight months, beginning in February of 2022, ranging from virtual meetings, discussions, and presentations, in-person meetings and presentations. We participated in multiple email campaigns, social media outlets, and communicated constantly through our dedicated project webpage. Obviously, you cannot cover all impacted residents and stakeholders, but we believe that we've made a concerted and successful effort. On this side, this shows that we've had two general project overview meetings, five in-person project meetings, five virtual project meetings, two email campaigns that we participated in, multiple social media informational outlets on the multiple social media channels. Our project website was continuously updated on a monthly basis, and we also plan on doing additional in-person outreach at 90% design plans and after direction from City Council In summary and conclusion, majority of the feedback that we've received to date from the multiple outreach efforts were in favor of alternative one bicycle lanes. Our Transportation and Parking Commission heard our presentation and voted in their August 2022 meeting in favor of alternative one bicycle lanes. Therefore, after considering all the relevant data and applying sound traffic engineering principles, as well as the community's input on the safety concerns, it is our department's recommendation that La Crisena Avenue is a great candidate for road repurposing, including adding a Class II protected bicycle lane. And with that, I'd like to open up to any questions or feedback you may have.
Okay. Any questions from staff? I mean, from my colleagues to staff? Councilmember Najarian?
Couple of questions. When you're, on page 11, when you're talking about the type of collisions, broadside collision, isn't the most likely scenario someone pulling out onto La Crisena, making a left turn and hit by someone that is on La Crisena? In terms of a broadside, is there another, you know, how do you envision? That's the highest number of accidents, type of accident. Do you have any information on what type of vehicle movements were involved in that?
Councilmember Najarian, broadside accidents, we do have that information available from the SWITTERs database, not on hand right now, but majority acts, the majority of the accidents, you're absolutely right, were broadside accidents. They could be caused by the turning maneuvers that you mentioned, and they could be caused by turning lane movements and, and, and lane changes.
Well, a lane change is not a broadside accident. That's a side swipe or a, it's different from a broadside. How would reducing the through lanes from two to one eliminate broadside accidents if, let's say, someone from Angeles is pulling out, attempting a left turn to go southbound on La Crisena? How would one lane be safer than two lanes and that sort of thing if the person obviously didn't see the car that hit him in that scenario?
Currently, in the two-lane configuration, oftentimes you have vehicles that are trying to pass one another when somebody's trying to make a left turn, so that when they make their lane change and they're passing a vehicle that's waiting to make a left turn, and then there's another vehicle making a left turn from a cross street, that potentially could reduce...
potentially could reduce that collision up broadside.
Okay. One of the numbers you threw out is 185,000 cost per accident? That seems incredibly high. Do you, that's not our number. That's generated from Caltrans, right?
Correct.
I mean, if someone's driving a, let's say it's a new Tesla, 50,000, 60,000, and he totals it against another Tesla, which is a huge accident, we're looking at 100,000 or so, 110,000 damage. How is the average that Caltrans is giving us 185,000? Seems a little high, doesn't it?
Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, Councilmember Najarian, I can only assume because the data came from Caltrans that they base it on accidents on the freeways that could be more extensive than on your city streets, potentially.
So by that argument, it wouldn't be appropriate to compare that average accident to an accident on a Locust Center type of street? Which, what kind of street is Locust Center Avenue? How would you characterize it?
I'd say major arterial.
Major arterial, okay. And what's the definition of a major arterial? Offhand.
Councilmember Najarian, major arterial is a multi-lane roadway that carries traffic predominantly from one area of the city to the next area of the city or through a neighborhood?
Or to freeways?
Yes, potentially.
So if we move it to one lane, as you're suggesting, are we changing the character of Locust Center Avenue then from a major arterial to something less than that?
The traffic volumes, the average daily traffic volumes actually on Locust Center are less than most major arterial roadways, so that is one of the factors that played into our recommendation of repurposing the roadway and reducing the travel lanes.
So there isn't much volume on Locust Center compared to what we would call a major arterial?
Yes, correct.
And how is the funding for this obtained? For this road reconstruction? Some of it's from MTA, correct?
From Metro, yes.
Like 1.7 million?
Yes.
And the fund, the exact fund, and I know this because I wrote this into the Measure R, it's the Subregional Highway Equalization Fund, correct?
Well...
Yes.
The subregi-
I know it is.
Yes.
I know it is. And, but Locust Center is in a highway. But when we wrote that into the legislation, it was available for major arterials. So are we risking by changing the nature of this road to something less than a major arterial, aren't we risking that funding by using it in a manner which was not intended? The same way we couldn't use that money to repave a Spar or Broadview or Angeles or Sycamore? Have you guys thought about that in any way?
The Measure R and the Metro funding for this project is predominantly for the modification of the traffic signals that are required for the project because the traffic signal infrastructure is so old, so we're mainly using that funding to fund the upgrades to the traffic signals.
Right. So the funding is for major arterials. And whether it's for road pavement or whether it's for traffic light improvements, I think that we risk losing that funding if we change the nature of that road because we're not making improvements to traffic lights on a major arterial anymore. We're making it on a local collector or a, something less than a major arterial. I don't know if you guys have thought about that, but I did. So that's perhaps something that should be considered when you change the nature of the road. As you said, the major arterial has multiple lanes connecting to a freeway, but if we're putting it to one lane in each direction, I think we may be putting that money at risk. That's all I have now, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Who would like to go next?
I just had a very small question. I've been following this a lot, so I understand the, most of the elements, but I noticed the, this cool pavement, it was the first time for me seeing this when I read the report. Is that, can you talk about more where that, that's just going to be a small segment in front of Fremont, or is that going to be a large part of the roadway that we're repaving?
Councilmember Rodman, so the cool pavement or the reflective pavement that we're going to be using as part of this project will be taking place in front of Fremont Elementary School located on Paloma Avenue between Locust Center and Downing, approximately 725 feet. It will be the first time that we're using cool pavement on a roadway. We've been using this technology on parking lots currently and an alley, so this is the first time that we're practicing it on a roadway in front of a school to reduce the heat element effect.
Okay. So we're still considering this a pilot? Is this still part of our-
Yes, this would be our first roadway-
Pilot program?
Pilot of cool pavement, exactly.
Okay. Well, separate from this issue, I would like to hear about how that pilot's going because your other two sites, I think at least the one in the parking lot behind Panerbit has been, I think, in place now for a good year. And maybe I'm wrong on that, but anyway, it would be good to, to see, you know, hear how that's going and when we can start doing this more broadly when we do a repave, you know, do the whole thing or a larger portion as a reflective pavement.
Okay, well, yes. Councilmember Osatian.
I drove up the street twice, and if I'm correct, the project ends about a block and a half before the freeway entrance, correct?
On Montrose Avenue?
When you're going, when you're going up-
Approximately about a block or two, yes.
And so what Mr. or Councilmember Najarian's referring to, would that still apply in changing what kind of road this is considered for the funding?
We would have to look into that as Councilmember Najarian's recommended and get back to you.
All right. If there are no other questions, we have approximately 30 speakers on this, 21 individuals who've come out to join us here in our council chambers, welcome, and approximately nine folks on telephones. Normally, we would allot three minutes per speaker on any other evening, but because of the volume of speakers, we will limit everyone to two minutes. So please try and be succinct. If someone already makes a point that you're going to make, say ditto or, you know, just agree. Anything you can do in the interest of brevity will be appreciated because 30 times two, it's going to be an hour of comments, which we welcome and appreciate, but be mindful of that. So with that, the people who are actually here will get the first bite at the apple and then we'll go to the folks who are watching from the comfort of their home or from wherever. First speaker is, and if I mispronounce your name, please correct me, David Mariuska. Two minutes. Following David will be Patrick Murphy. If you want to walk, come up here and wave in the bullpen in the interest of time, you're welcome to.
Good afternoon. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is David Mariuska, and I'm a Glendale resident in the Verdugo Woodlands area, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide comment today in support of option one for this agenda item. You can play the video. The video playing now was taken at the intersection of Locust Center and Sierra Vista on a weekday afternoon to capture traffic conditions from a cyclist's and pedestrian's perspective. And as folks can clearly see, of the few cars that are on the road at this time, most are going well over the posted speed limit at almost freeway speeds. Drivers are also forced to make dangerous left-hand turns in the face of oncoming traffic due to a lack of traffic control devices that are on Locust Center. These conditions create environment that's dangerous and hostile to pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists alike. Staff's own research and outreach is clear. Out of the two options that are before you today, only option one is going to introduce the critical, potentially life-saving, traffic calming measures needed to make Locust Center and the city of Glendale a safer place to walk, bike, and drive. I appreciate your time and hope for your support in option one. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Murphy, followed by Dave Gallagher.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I live on Sycamore Woods, in Sycamore Woods. We are in favor unanimously in that neighborhood for alternative number two, one of the reasons being the video that is going to be shown here. So I took this in an evening, which is around the corner in terms of the fall. This is Sycamore Avenue. We are very concerned about cut-through traffic, both in the morning and in the evening. This is what it looks like on our street in the evening. So there's very little light, which is okay with us, but we are concerned about cut-through traffic. We understand the concern families on Fremont, with Fremont Elementary, I get that. I think that there, we all think that there are different methods to slow traffic, speed limit reduction. I know that the California statutes don't allow that necessarily, speed monitoring, some enforcement. I did send an email to Mr. Imrani regarding some mitigating measures. If you do choose alternative one, which again we are opposed to, we would like to see, I gave him six measures that was a little late to the party, but we would like to see no turns off of Honolulu onto our side streets. We are in the southwest quadrant of Honolulu and Locust Center Avenue, and we already get this where people come off Honolulu, drop down to avoid that intersection at Honolulu and Locust Center. So we can put signs up, we should be able to put turning restrictions onto all those streets, evening turning restrictions, eliminating the cut-through traffic. This is the most dangerous period, is when it gets dark, as shown on the video. Speed humps, especially on Sycamore, more stop signs, especially at Ramsdale, and intersection tightening methods at all intersections off of Honolulu, utilizing plastic bollards to avoid drivers speeding around corners. We think the best fix would be a cul-de-sac at Cloud and Honolulu, not allowing any traffic to come down onto Cloud and then come across Sycamore. I'm happy to work with Public Works on these measures if you so direct. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Murphy. Next speaker is Dave Gallagher, followed by Travis Brown. And after the fifth speaker, we'll stop taking new callers and cards. So if you're sitting on the fence, turn your card in now. Mr. Gallagher.
Hi, my name is Dave Gallagher. I'm glad to be here to be able to speak about this. I spoke about eight months ago, and I thought it was a great idea. My family applauded my efforts, speaking fast on the phone, but here I am. And I hope that this is enough to share with you that we really do need option one. We need the safety for bicyclists, for pedestrians, and I sent you all an email that detailed one horrific, or could have been more horrific, but a scenario that I ran down to. It was a sound of incredible screech and a crash. It was a car that was driving northbound, crossed the sidewalk, and into the channel. Incredible speed, incredible recklessness. The people pulled themselves out of the car. Us, rest of the neighbors went down, perceived we were under aid, and we saw people that were in shock. Now, this whole story sounds pretty bad, but it could have been much worse if, when that car traveling northbound at the speeds that they do, crossing over that sidewalk into the channel, had taken out an adult or a child, simply on their sidewalk. So I just think that option one identifies, and I really applaud the traffic engineering. Thank you so much. Anytime that you can reduce the lane width, you'll reduce the speeds associated with the street. So what you're doing when you went to one lane in each direction blew me away. I wasn't expecting that was going to be option one. So I would like to maybe offer that if it's possible, if we can add a, for that protected bike lane, to put the parked cars in between the traveling lane or maybe some other kind of permanent barrier. And I got it all out. So thank you very much. I'll be done.
Thank you very much. Next is Travis Brown, followed by Kent Clark.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thanks for letting me speak. As a resident of Sycamore Woods, I will say we're not unanimous. I definitely come out in favor of option or alternative one. As a resident of that neighborhood, my family and I, we use this road extensively. I'm always driving down, take my kids to sports. Every morning, I bike my kids, which are seated back there. I've got a kindergartner, a third grader, a fourth grader, and we, and even, you know, some of the other kids in the neighborhood, we bike down together to the, to the school every morning. And it's dangerous. I mean, there's one narrow sidewalk that we have to take. There's garbage cans, there's cars turning in and out. You know, my kids, just in the last two years, have had several near misses. And so I really think that we need to make the road a little safer. I think that having bike lanes on the road would make a big difference. I think that reducing the number of traffic lanes would really reduce the throughput. It would prevent people from cutting off the freeway and cutting through our section of town through the residential neighborhoods. So I think, you know, anything we can do to take this, what is essentially a highway, I know we were arguing about what it's classified as, but it feels like a highway right now. And it's right through, you know, there's driveways and our elementary school, and we've got cars flying down at 50 miles an hour right next to all this stuff. And we've got kids biking and walking, and it's just really not suited, see, I don't think it's, it's really well-suited to the needs of the community. So I think, this is my timer here, 20 seconds. You know, I think that it's really a safety issue. I think we can improve the character of our city if we reduce the amount of traffic that really should be on the freeways, and it really shouldn't be cutting through our neighborhood in the first place. And, you know, as Californians, we're always talking about having a healthy, balanced, environmentally friendly lifestyle. Well, let's put our money where our mouth is. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Kent Clark, followed by Melissa Molton Church.
Thank you for taking my comments. I also live in Sycamore Woods. I'm completely in favor of option two because of what Patrick said of cut-through traffic. You reduce that, this section of Locust Center to two lanes, one in each direction. Those trapped people are not going to go anywhere else. They, this, Locust Center is the only street that connects the Crescent Valley with Glendale. It is one of the few streets that connects to a freeway on ramp. Those people using Locust Center Avenue are not going to just disappear. There are going to be traffic jams, there are going to be people cutting through my neighborhood, trying to cut a few seconds off of their evening and their morning commute. One other comment I'd like to make, I went to a neighborhood presentation of this, and just like tonight, no one mentioned anything about a traffic survey. Do any of you know how many cars go on Locust Center Avenue every day? I mean, that's data. That's science. Has the city done a traffic survey in the last little while? Is that part of this discussion? And if not, why isn't it? This shouldn't be a discussion of emotional appeals about families and people getting in accidents. This should be driven by data. If this is a major arterial street, you need to know, we need to know how many cars each day use that versus how many would use it with only two lanes versus how many bicyclists would use it. That's how you should make this decision, based on data and not by emotional appeals by people like me or other people in this room. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Melissa Molton Church, followed by Cole Basemore.
Hi, thank you, guys. I'm here to speak for option one. The first speaker showed a video of traffic flying down Locust Center, and that was my house in the corner. I see that traffic flying every single day. I'm also the PTA president at Fremont, and our kids are walking down that road to school. They're walking, they're biking, they're scootering. It's a thin, broken-up sidewalk. There's driveways, and cars are flying. We looked and said that cars are going 45 miles an hour. They are going so much faster sometimes. They peel off that road onto my street, where my kids playing, my dogs playing, and people are concerned that those cars are going to be coming down their road, and I understand that because those cars are already coming down my road. And they are racing at night. We're woken up probably two to three times a week. We're woken up by people drag racing down Locust Center. I understand that they're worried it's going to happen on their street, but that doesn't mean that we should let it keep happening on my street. So please vote for option one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Cole Basemore, followed by Roberta Medford.
Good evening, Merkisakian councilmembers. I am here in support of option one of the bike lanes. I think the numbers speak for themselves. This is really a safety improvement for this whole corridor. We're going to see more use being, being had by bicyclists like myself. I've been up to the Duke Magin Park, and I think this would be a great option for me on the bike to be able to just ride up that Locust Center Avenue. The school is there. I think if you can improve the safety near that, that school district or that school, that's going to be enormous for a lot of people. So I think the safety really, again, speaks for itself, less traffic accidents. And again, if it's improved, we'll see more bicyclists use that, that facility because, as the previous speaker, one of the previous speakers mentioned- as the previous speaker, one of the previous speakers mentioned, just because there aren't bicyclists using it now, doesn't mean they won't come. If you build it, they'll come. So, thank you.
Thank you. Roberta Medford, followed by Martha Sensel.
Mayor, city council, city staff, thank you. My name's Roberta Medford. I live in the first block of Sycamore Avenue to the east of La Crescenta, so maybe four or five houses away. It is too fast, it is unsafe, there aren't enough crosswalks, but the crosswalks are not safe that are there because cars go too fast. Bicycling is good for us and for our climate. I'm very much in support of alternative one. And I know many people on Sycamore, my husband, my nephew, his husband, their six-year-old children, at, at least five people I could name easily that are definitely in support of alternative one, but don't have the luxury or the leisure or the, the facility to come to this kind of meeting. So please give us alternative one. Thank you.
Okay, Martha Sensel, followed by Zoe Witt.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a 24-year resident of the Verdugo Woodlands, and I'm also an avid cyclist who frequently uses La Crescenta Avenue, even though I do consider it to be unsafe. I am here to express my strong support for alternative one. I believe that the proposed changes are going to make the, the road more livable for all, not just bikes, not just cyclists, not just pedestrians, families, but also motorists. The slower speeds overall will reduce car collisions that are just involving cars, as we've seen from the data. I'm especially pleased on the side that there's been mitigation for the drainage areas on the lower part of the road, which are right in the center of, of the bike lane and are actually quite dangerous. And I've attended two Zoom meetings, as well as the Parking and Transportation meeting here, I think it was in August. And as you've seen tonight, there is much support, especially from families in the area who have children at the, at the school, and residents in the area. I don't think that, it is my view that slowing the speeds overall will make it less likely for motorists to use any of that area as cut-through. An analogy is the city of Davis, California, where they have many, many stop signs on, on streets to encourage walking and biking and, and discourage cars from even going through these neighborhoods, because they have to keep stopping all of the time. So the more we make it unfriendly to cars and more friendly to biking and walking, I think the more livable our city will be. I strongly hope that you will take leadership on this in making our city more livable. I don't think this is a cost issue, really, whether it's savings or future costs, it's really about livability. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoe Witt, followed by Chris Welch.
Hello, my name is Zoe, and I'm happy to give public comment tonight on behalf of my partner and I. We're relatively new to Glendale, and we have really come to love the city. But one area of improvement is certainly around safe and dedicated bike lanes. As young people with full lives ahead, climate change is an issue that is very much important to us, and finding ways to reduce our carbon footprint is very much things that we're trying to do. And biking is one really easy and tangible action that we can take. But unfortunately, we don't currently feel completely safe biking throughout the city. And so we generally would love to see a greater network of bike lanes. And additionally, I'm speaking in support of alternative one, of the La Crescenta Rehabilitation Project, because we, we believe that dedicated bike lanes are critical to making bikers like ourselves feel safe on roads. So thank you so much.
Next speaker is Chris Welch, followed by Philip Ruddy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am here to speak in favor of alternative one. I sent over the weekend a very lengthy email with six key points that I think that I'm not going to rehash here again today. Instead, I want to focus on a couple of, of things. 10 years ago, in 2012, this council also considered this same solution for La Crescenta, which was to have two lanes, one lane in each direction, a center-turning lane. And if the city had taken action at that point in time to implement that vision at that time, according to the city's statistics, 104 collisions happened, but 30, there could have been a 30% reduction. So in the last 10 years, we could have prevented 46 collisions that happened on that street. So to me, that's kind of a, an opportunity lost, but I just wanted to bring back a little history, because I presented a slideshow during that hearing and showed the statistics of the vehicle counts on those streets. At that time, and to answer one of the gentleman's questions, the, the street had about 12,000 average daily volume, which is much lower, much lower, and sometimes half of the same, of the volume on similar streets with only one lane in each direction. So there's certainly precedent within this city for streets that operate perfectly safely, perfectly well, with one, only one lane in each direction, at much higher volumes than La Crescenta. And then finally, I will say that the, the issue really is about the safety. It is about reducing the speeds on that street. And the only way to really reduce speeds, which I think is everybody's goal here, is to re-engineer the road. And so focusing on re-engineering efforts, which is what is being proposed here, I think is the best, and really only, alternative if the city's goal is reducing vehicle miles traveled. So, thank you.
Philip Ruddy, followed by Benjamin Ruddy.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council members. I'm actually Anna Tivwana Ruddy, Philip Ruddy's wife. He had to put my name in because I was in a meeting and had to arrive late. I'm a 30-year Glendale resident, living in Spar Heights, a block from La Crescenta Avenue. I have an 11-year-old who goes to school at Fremont Elementary, and we walk and bike to school every day. My family strongly supports moving forward with alternative one, with a designated bike lane and a two-way center-turn lane. As a driver, it provides space, safe space, without fear of getting rear-ended or hit by oncoming traffic as you enter or exit side streets and multiple driveways along La Crescenta Avenue. Also, it allows drivers time to pause and assess if folks are crossing the side streets and driveways before they make their turn. Otherwise, if we didn't have that, a lot of people panic and turn into the driveways and the side streets, and last-minute see all the kids and families that are walking on the side streets. As a bicyclist, it allows for dedicated space in the roadway, separate from fast-moving traffic and from having to run over pedestrians on the sidewalks. Our, you know, friends and neighbors here, we see them every day biking, Travis's family, you know, all of them there, and we're walking, we're all on top of each other on this narrow sidewalk. As a pedestrian, we are competing for space in narrow sidewalks with folks on bikes. So only alternative one can address the safety concerns of existing conditions, because it provides a designated space for all roadway users. We remain opposed to alternative two, and ask you tonight to permanently reject alternative two, because it provides no meaningful safety improvements from what we already have today. You've received both a combination of technical expertise and community input that shows support for alternative one, so there's really nothing else to wait for, no other alternatives to be concerned, except for alternative one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. If I can ask, hey Benjamin, how are you? If I can ask everyone to just hold your applause, even though I know Benjamin will probably deserve applause after his comments. Welcome to council, buddy.
Thank you.
But, in the interest of time, please, no cheering. Go ahead, Benjamin.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Ben, and I'm 11-years-old, and I go to school at Fremont Elementary next to La Crescenta Avenue. Whenever I go to school, I either walk or bike. Lots of cars pass me every day. When I try talking to my family, all noise gets blocked out by the sounds of cars speeding. It feels like whenever I walk, a car is close to hitting me, and most cars go past the speed limit. Me and my friends play tag as we walk home, and the cars aren't paying attention to kids on the sidewalk because we're too small. Most of the cars cut us off as we cross the road, and they're trying to turn right from La Crescenta into Spar Heights. When cars come down a hill, they can't see us while we're crossing because of blind spots and speeding. Just being next to the sidewalk, I'm getting worried about getting hit by a car. If I happen to trip and fall from the sidewalk, a speeding car will definitely hit me. Kids are just kids. We like to play as we're walking, and when we playfully push each other, a car will for sure hit us. When I'm walking, bikes ride down the sidewalk because it's too dangerous on the roads, and we have very little space to get out of the way. That's why Glendale should put a separate space for bikes on the road, so we can walk safely without having to dodge bikes. And when we do bike, it's hard to not hit people walking because of narrow sidewalks, but I'm too scared of the road. There's too much speeding cars that will hit me. When cars go really fast, they kill small, innocent, and well-armed animals, and I've seen roadkill many times on the road before. Cars also use a lot of gas while they're speeding and cause global warming. I'm partly feeling the heat change recently. Sometimes I want to walk to school, and it's so hot and humid, and it doesn't make me want to walk or bike anymore. I think it would be great if Glendale made a separate pathway for bikes, trees, and pedestrians instead of cars. That's why I vote for alternative one. Alternative two is not good, because when I was biking on a road with sharos, I wasn't a fast enough biker and almost got hit by a car. I know there are many more kids that feel like I do, but cannot make it tonight. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Benjamin. All right, next is Jennifer Ho, and then after Jennifer is Edward Gonzalez.
Hi, city council members. My name is Jennifer Ho. I live in La Crescenta Montrose, in close proximity to this rehabilitation project. My husband and I take La Crescenta Avenue down to La Crescenta Nursery, Montrose Shopping Park, and to downtown Glendale. That's how we got here today. And as someone who takes the car 99% of the time to get around the neighborhood, I support alternative one, to add bike lanes and a center-turn lane. Alternative one will make the road safer for everyone. It will reduce the amount of collisions for drivers like myself, and provide safer routes for kids and families using other modes of transportation, like biking or walking. To be honest, I do not enjoy driving. I don't wake up and say, yay, I get to drive today. It really causes me anxiety and stress, and every year, it seems that the amount of vehicles on the road and the traffic gets worse. It's simply not fun and not sustainable. The only reason I drive is because it seems as though the city is built around cars, and we rely on them. I would like to see diversification in our modes of transportation. Adding safe, dedicated bike lanes is a good start. Getting more people to be active will also help with public health outcomes. Plus, riding bikes can also help tackle the failing air quality problem that we all suffer from in LA. I support alternative one. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Edward Gonzalez, followed by Cassandra Choudhury.
Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Edward Gonzalez. My wife and I are homeowners in La Crescenta, one block from La Crescenta Avenue, near the 210 freeway. As a regular driver on this road, I see the high speeds and blind corners that make it a recipe for traffic violence. I support alternative one, with center-turnout lane and reduce travel, reduce lanes of travel. Even seemingly large speed reductions would result in less than a minute of additional travel time, while making the road far safer for all road users. While cut-through traffic concerns are valid, the city should work with the affected communities if those concerns are realized. The addition of bicycle lanes will also help part of a growing network of, growing transportation network that provides joyful, healthy, and for some, the only transit options in the area. The lack of existing cycling, pedestrian use doesn't indicate the intrinsic safety of La Crescenta Avenue so much as existing fear in sharing the road. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Cassandra, followed by Joaquin CK.
Good evening. I'm speaking in support of alternative one. When I lost my car to theft last year, my lifelines were the public transportation system and a bike. The bike lanes around Glendale, which I had never before noticed while driving, are now routes that I take every day. I take my bike to get groceries, go to work meetings, play pickleball with friends, and visit the animal shelter that I volunteer at. A dedicated bike lane on La Crescenta is an important community amenity and will open up new opportunities for me and for others like me for whom driving is not an option. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Followed by Manuel Menjivar. Go ahead, Joaquin.
Honorable mayor and members of city council, my name is Joaquin Cikas, and I'd like to start by thanking you for considering the safety of La Crescenta Avenue with this proposed street reconfiguration and rehabilitation project. I would also like to thank city staff that's done a great deal of work and significant outreach to arrive to this point recommending alternative one. I'm a licensed traffic engineer, practicing for almost 20 years, and I've lived on Arquita's Avenue, two houses away from La Crescenta Avenue, for the past 16 years. I drive this street daily, and I walk along the street multiple times a week. I support alternative one for all the safety reasons that you've heard today, including the addition of that center-left turn lane, which will greatly reduce risky motorist behavior and potentially reduce rear-end crashes and broadside crashes, which I could get into more details if time permits. Second, I oppose the need for a quick-build option as identified as an alternative three. It's a very expensive option for an unnecessary test. Alternative one has been studied by consultants, recommended by city staff, and has significant public support from residents along the corridor and parents that drop off their children to Fremont Elementary School. It is expensive to quick-build a lane reconfiguration because of the need to remove all of the roadway markings and reinstall striping along the corridor. In addition, you need to adjust all of the vehicle detection zones at signals that are actuated. It's also difficult to identify a low-cost quick-build option. You can't just cone off the curb lane and test a single lane condition, because without the center-left turn lane, you will have congestion and delay whenever someone stops in the single travel lane to make a left turn, creating public backlash for the project. A quick-build must demonstrate the actual final design conditions, which is very expensive for a lane reconfiguration project. $750,000 could be used for so many other transportation projects throughout the city. It would pay for striping of over 100 continental crosswalks. It would pay for 75 ADA accessible curb ramps, or the construction of 30-speed feedback signs. That money could be better spent on safety throughout Glendale, instead it would be an unnecessary test case. Thank you for your consideration of this item.
Thank you. Manuel Menjivar, followed by Peter Hbert.
Good evening, city council. I remember that traffic safety was a priority during the campaign for re-electing some of you, and some of them that want to be part of this wonderful people that works as a city council. And that's the reason I'm here in favor of the alternative number one. Because if it was your concern, and this is a fact, and all of us know, we live in, assuming that all of us live in Glendale, right? We know that we have a problem with speeding. It doesn't matter where, where you live, it is speeding. I live in Canara, and weekly, the officers are there every week, at least two days a week, constantly working, working, working. And they're busy. They're not drinking coffee, you know, the traffic, the speeding keep them busy. So let's do something to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Hbert, followed by Alec Bartersoff.
I live on Rose Lawn Avenue, which was identified as one of the streets that could be affected with increased traffic. And I'm here to support option one. Rose Lawn Avenue already gets a lot of cut-through traffic with people traveling down to La And even with that, I think, because it runs directly parallel to La Crescenta, I think it's most likely to see the increase in traffic if La Crescenta backs up. Even with that, I think the increase in safety on La Crescenta Avenue is, is well worth it. I think something that nobody's pointed out yet, all of the turns on La Crescenta around Fremont Elementary School are less than 90 degrees. If you're turning right from La Crescenta, or you're turning left from La Crescenta onto Paloma, onto Los Palmas, or onto Angeles, and you're traveling at 46 miles an hour, you do not have to slow down, and you can go through those intersections at 35 miles an hour easy, or 40. It's inherently unsafe. The bike lane will add, first of all, will allow people to pull into the center-turn lane, so they can turn left safely, and will also add space for cars that are turning right onto all of those residential streets, so they have time and space to see pedestrians on the sidewalk and avoid collisions. I personally had three or four near misses walking on Hermosa, Piedmont, down La Crescenta as cars are coming down that street so fast and turning left onto those streets. It's just not safe. I'm also an avid biker, a commute to work- I'm also a avid biker, I commute to work in Somar on a regular basis. I've been hit by a car biking in sharrows, and sharrows are not worth the paint that they're used to put with. By the way, I still would consider, everyone has a different risk appetite, I would still consider La Crescenta an unsafe place to bike. At the speeds that people are going, an extra couple feet between the bike lane and car traffic takes about 45 milliseconds for a car to travel that way. So I'd support Dave Gallagher. If we're going to put a bike lane, it would be a protected bike, actually physically protected, not paint, is not physical protection, would provide a much safer option for bicyclists on that road. Thank you.
Thank you. Alec Bartrusov, followed by Alex Cañeros.
Good evening, Alec Bartrusov. I support Option 1. There have been 150 collisions on this corridor in the last 10 years. You, as a council, have embraced the idea of Vision Zero, have embraced the idea of active transportation and getting people out of their cars as a sustainability objective. But as an advocate that's been in this community for more than 10 years, having seen the Greener Glendale Plan in 2010, the bicycle plan in 2012, as an urban planner, I have a lot of respect for plans that get adopted, but I am very frustrated with the lack of implementation of those plans. So if we're embracing an idea of Vision Zero, this is a project that you can implement that will actually achieve the goal of Vision Zero. So let's turn the symbolism and the words into action and let this be the test case for that. We have done education and enforcement all we could on this particular corridor. This is a perfect example of how it does not work. There have been speed feedback signs, there's constantly a police presence there, and despite all that, we see all of these collisions, all of these broadsides and rear ends speeding going 48 miles an hour and above. We need to redesign the street. We've exhausted our outreach efforts, we've done 11 meetings on this one project, you've seen 300 comments come in with 200 of them in support of Option 1. This is a slam dunk, and as engineers say, the corridor can manage the existing volumes with one lane in each direction. And quite frankly, to the cut-through concerns, we can address that as well. We shouldn't mitigate or think of their concerns by offsetting the safety concerns on La Crescenta. We can do both, and we should do both. Thank you.
All right. Alex, followed by Yaprham Davudian.
I was going to say ditto to a lot of the speakers here tonight. A lot of good points made about the safety concerns and bike access, but I just want to talk about, when I travel, I love traveling around other cities all around the world and around the country. Cities big and small, cities the size of Glendale, you just see a lot more people outside and just being in community with each other, and that's because there's infrastructure that encourages people to be out of their cars and with each other outside in these spaces. And it just feels good to live in a city where people of all ages, all abilities, can be on a bike and travel across any part of the city, especially residential neighborhoods, and just feel like that's a normal, everyday thing in life and not an adventurous, special bike thing to do. And so I think Glendale should be one of those cities. We are a beautiful place with beautiful weather, with families and all types of people living here. Let's make our city like that, and this is a really easy start, this street, because of all the reasons we've said. It's not going to affect traffic, it's something that needs to be safer anyway, so let's start here and keep going and make our city feel like one of these places that I go to, and I'm like, wow, living here would be so nice. I wish I felt like that in Glendale.
Yaprham Davudian.
Thank you, and good evening, council members. My name is Yaprham Davudian, longtime resident, first-time speaker. I'll be quick, and I will take the mayor's advice of saying ditto to all my peers who spoke on Alternative 1, but I do want to emphasize the most important aspect of this plan is safety, safety, and safety. I know there are costs with accidents, and I respect the questions you're posing for the officials who have done their due diligence. There are issues with emotions. People live in these areas, and I get that, but understand that a life is worth more than a dollar sign, and I do appreciate your time, and have a good evening.
All right, let's go to the callers. Look, I'm watching.
We have nine callers. Our first caller is Vahen Dilanian. Vahen, you're on air, and you have two minutes.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Kosakian and member of the City Council. Can you guys hear me, actually?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So my wife and I both ride a bicycle. We also enjoy riding on a motorcycle, so it has become increasingly dangerous riding either of the cycles, either a bicycle or motorcycle. I personally got hit twice, once on Glen Oaks with a speeding car and up in a hospital, and the other on San Fernando Road. So that's not in this area. So we both also had a close call on Verdura Road while cycling and being witness to speeding cars on La Crescenta Avenue. My contractor actually lives on La Crescenta and near Fremont, had his mirror broken twice by passing cars. Every morning, wife and I walk from our home on Glenco Way, which I've been living there for 22 years and almost 50 years in Glendale, to La Crescenta all the way up to Honolulu and then back to the house. The wind factor from these speeding cars going north or even south, it just sticks your heart. It has become Speedway, like Verdugo Road has. Parents can't even open their doors to drop off their kids without getting hit to take them to Fremont. We now have grandkids, and we'd like to put them in the backseat of our bicycle and have our boys and their wives to cycle with us. Believe me, the only alternative would be the one, the number one in your agenda, in your study. This is a dream come true for many of us to make our city safer and to have, you know, a center turning lane for the parents to safely turn and for others who wanted to change directions or what have you. So, you know, again, I support.
Dilanian, you run out of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alternative 1, thank you.
Our next caller is Audrey Ellis. Audrey, you're on air, you have two minutes. Audrey Ellis.
All right, let's go to the.
Our next caller is Melanie Verkins. Melanie, you're on air, you have two minutes.
Hi, City Council. Thank you for taking my call. I'm a 30-year resident in the Sycamore Woods area, very close to the project on La Crescenta Avenue. I understand the safety concerns of all these people that live close to Fremont, and I do believe that it is a street that I would not ride my bike on. But I have concerns about solutions to mitigate the traffic through my street, Sycamore Avenue. What about a cul-de-sac on Cloud Avenue? We haven't discussed this yet, and I'd really like to hear about it. I'm concerned about safety, cars race up and down this street as it is, and if they're trying to avoid traffic turning onto La Crescenta, I think this is going to be a Speedway through our little quiet street. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's take a pause for one moment. I did have one card, but it was submitted with a handwritten note from Ben McCreary, who I believe is here. Does Ben want to actually address the council, or do you?
Yeah.
You already spoke? Okay. So, all right, we have two cards, I guess, or this note duly noted. All right, let's go back to the callers. Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, our next caller is Willard Gleason. Willard, you're on air, you have two minutes. Willard Gleason. Okay, our next caller is CJ Camizal. CJ, you're on air, you have two minutes.
Hi, City Council. Thank you. My name is CJ Senazal. I live on Arquita's Avenue, just across the block from Center. You know, cars speed on the street, driving so fast that, you know, I don't think I'd be comfortable letting my kids block the school on the sidewalk. You know, my hat socks, Benjamin, he's very kid. People who pause to make left turns cause traffic jams behind them with cars honking and swerving to get past. Frankly, I can't imagine being a bicyclist in that mayhem. I know I'm repeating a lot of what people said already. I just want to emphasize what earlier caller said, when he said, you know, this is all not safety. So I'm calling in favor of Alternative 1. I believe this is the right option for us, for our neighborhood. I believe it'll help Glendale look up to its great reputation. It's a great place to live and make my neighborhood safe, so thank you. Please choose Alternative 1.
Thank you. Our next caller is Catherine Yirka. Catherine, you're on air, you have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Kosakian, members of the City Council. I would have hung up, but it was being rude to me. That's only because I think that everyone in the council chambers has done such a magnificent job of articulating the very good reasons why Alternative 1 is the only possibility. All I will say is just to thank staff for their hard work on this, and I expect you to do the right thing. Thanks so much for your time. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Our next caller is Ani Garabian. Ani, you're on air, you have two minutes.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak on this topic. Firstly, this was very informative presentation, so thank you for that. It alone shows that Alternative 1 is the best option, given the safety all around. This project also fits in perfectly with the city's Net Zero, Vision Zero goals and the Verdugo Watch project. So the connectivity option with that project. In addition, this also opens the door to go down other streets within that neighborhood that we've heard about. It's a good option for us to review this in the next year, but I also would like to echo the other gentleman who suggested having actual protected bike lanes, either with cars or barriers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next caller is Katie Smith. Katie, you're on air, you have two minutes.
Hello, thank you, mayor and City Council members. My partner and I moved to Glendale about one to two years ago, and it is such a beautiful place, and we're so lucky to be here. We're also lucky to live near this corridor that we're talking about right now. And I want to thank the visionaries that looked at the data and looked at the budget and decided that this was a good investment. I agree. I agree with Alternative Number 1, and so does my partner. This is a gem of a neighborhood that we can make safer for our kids. If you care about the data, if you care about your kids, yeah, you want to have Alternative Number 1. This is how we're going to help reduce pollution. We know the world is changing, we have an obligation to do that. The speeding, for sure, reducing the speeding and the traffic is going to help protect those kids. Again, look at the Vision Zero data. Access, it's going to provide more access to all of us. You know, I love, you know, biking, but around here, right now, I'm in Whiting Woods, I have to put my bike really on my car and go somewhere else to drive safely because even though there's, you know, some semblance of a bike lane here, it's very dangerous. And what we've learned is there's constantly people just, not just speeding, but racing down these roads. We absolutely need to do something about that. And I understand what my neighbors are saying. I've heard many people have concerns, and I think we should listen to those concerns for sure, but there's no reason not to move forward with this. And so I just want to, yes, focus on the data, focus on the research. We have the money, let's do what's right, let's listen to the visionaries that are behind this because our kids and our kids' kids will benefit, and all of us will. So thank you, and yeah, for everyone who's behind Alt. 1, thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Mary Anderson. Mary, you're on air, you have two minutes.
Hi.
Go ahead.
I am in favor of Alternative 2, reducing the speed limit around La Crescenta, Honolulu. And enforcing the speed laws, I don't think that's done. The other thing is by selecting Alternative 1, it's a road diet. You're not concerned about safety. You just want to make it miserable for the people that have to commute to and from work or just recreation so that we're going to get out of our cars. That's not going to happen. We have to go to work, and if using a car is the way to go, that's how we're going to do it. You're not going to change people's mind or how they operate their cars. They're going to drive fast, they're going to drive fast whether it's a road diet or it's safe the way it is. That's my input. Go for Alternative 2, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final caller is Willard Gleason. Willard, you're on air, you have two minutes. Willard? Mayor Kosakian, I've called on Willard a number of times.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. That was great. I think we finished under the allotted, or what I envisioned to be an hour. So I'd like to turn to my colleagues for their comments and deliberation. I believe, actually, no, staff would like to. I'm sorry, Councilmember Devine, I'll go to you once staff has commented. Mr. Galanian, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Kosakian. I'm going to turn it over and ask Mr. Ambronia, Director of Public Works, who has a clarification to make regarding the funding, as well as a response to Councilmember Sotia's question.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. In terms of the funding for Measure R, we are fairly certain that this would, the reclassification or the changing, taking away one travel lane in each direction, would not impact the funding for this particular item. It would still be classified as a, it would go from a major arterial to a minor arterial, but it would still be considered an arterial. And furthermore, based on past practices and our understanding of Measure R, there is a provision by Metro that if we wanted to go and add complete street elements to this, such as Class 2 bike lanes, that that flexibility is also provided as part of funding. I'm just clarifying, this is independent of, obviously, any decision that the council would want to make, but I just wanted to mention that we've followed up on this, and this is our understanding of the funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Councilmember Devine? Yeah.
All right. First of all, I want to thank everybody that's contributed to the discussion on this project. Staff, for all the work that you've done. Sorry, I forgot to put my mic on. I want to thank staff for all the work that you've done. I want to thank all the callers, the emails that we've gotten, a lot of those, everyone that attended all of the outreach meetings. I mean, that was quite an incredible number of outreach meetings concerning this reconfiguration. I'm not going to go through all of the reasons, the good reasons, why this project should move forward and move forward right away. I do want to thank, let's see, Patrick Murphy for your suggestions on mitigations. You know, oftentimes, people come to council and they tell us all the wrong things and what's wrong, but they don't give us suggestions, and so I thank you. And actually, I was going to suggest, because I'm absolutely for Alternative Number 1, no doubt in my mind, but I do think that, you know, I'm kind of old-school. I don't ride a bike. I take my car, and I don't usually walk anyplace either, so I don't have a vested interest in this, and it doesn't matter to me how many, right now, how many cars are on this street, how many cyclists are on this street, how many pedestrians are on this street. I can see the future, and the future is now, and that future is multimodal transportation to provide safety to cyclists, pedestrians, to get people out of their cars, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so I think this project is a good one. It helps us in so many ways towards Vision Zero, towards the VMT numbers, et cetera. So I am definitely going to approve Alternative Number 1, but I want to make sure that staff pays very close attention to the cut-through traffic on Sycamore and some of the other streets, and we have heard a lot of mitigations. I also heard from one transportation employee that said, not from our city, from another city. city, that said that we could post no right turn signs at peak hours. I understand the peak hours are in the morning and the evening, so maybe during those hours, when we know there's a lot of traffic on that street, not allow for, for turns onto the, the side streets. So there are, like we said, there are a lot of ways to prevent cut-through and to mitigate that problem. So with that, I'm, I'm going to conclude my comments and approve alternative number one.
Councilmember Sotia?
Sure. I'm also in support of option number one. I had the opportunity to drive out on Friday at 5:00 PM, and then I wanted to see what it looked like when school was coming out. I don't think that this is just for building a bike-friendly city, but this is also in line with our pedestrian safety plan, division zero that we want to implement. I do have concerns, you know, when I was up there, the triangular yield right by the, right by the school when you're coming down, and then you hit Locust Center, looked awfully dangerous to me. I don't know if, you know, as you're fixing this road, if you can look at the engineering for that. It almost felt like I had to keep waiting for the cars to pass in order for me to make the left turn, but it just kind of looked like cars were just going every wished direction. And so ensuring that while we're doing this, we also look at that would be important to me. And if you could work with Mr. Murphy on his request for left turns and how we can mitigate any impact that it may have on his street and, and the surrounding neighborhood, that would be wonderful as well. Thank you to staff, and thank you to everyone that called, emailed, came in, and also found my cell phone number. I got a bunch of text messages. I don't know who gave it up, but thank you. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. So I do support bike lanes throughout the city, and in conjunction with the BRT that we're bringing in, there's going to be quite an extensive protected bike lane system on Broadway, Central, and Glen Oaks. My problem with this, however, is Locust Center is just not your average road, and I was questioning this. Locust Center Avenue is a major arterial. According to the Traffic Engineering Manual, a major arterial is a high-capacity urban road that sits just below freeways on the road hierarchy in terms of traffic flow and speed. The primary function of an arterial road is to deliver traffic from collector roads to freeways, and we see that on the 210 freeway, and between urban centers. And it is used, as we know, to get from Locust Center to Glendale. It is to be, it is to be given the highest level of service possible. So we're going from a two-lane road in each direction to a one-lane, and I think that's a problem. I think we're going to see a lot of traffic congestion, a lot of cut-through traffic, whether we like it or not, whether we put signs or not. I think we're going to see an increase in accidents because we're going to have vehicles that are impatient, drivers that are impatient, and doing unusual passing maneuvers. I don't know who was around the city in 2000. I don't think any of our planning staff was. Maybe the city manager was. I don't think any of the council was involved. I was on the Transportation and Parking Commission back then, and someone came up with a great idea of doing something very similar to what we're proposing on Verdugo Road, to reduce it from two lanes in each direction to one lane in each direction with a turn lane. You know how long that lasted? Once the public saw what it actually involved? It lasted about a week before there was huge public outcry, and rather embarrass, embarrassingly, the sandblasters from the Public Works Department were out there returning it to its configuration. That was a road diet. There were bike lanes, but I don't think bike lanes were the main cause, the main reason that it was put through. I think it was put through for what people thought were safety reasons. Mike Bonin ran into some trouble in his district when he wanted to put in road diet to accommodate bikes. The thing that bothers me is I've read some emails that weren't addressed to me, that were addressed maybe to staff, not intended for me to read, but what it said is, whatever you do, don't put in alternative three. Don't put in the test case, because when people that ride, that drive on that Locust Center Avenue see what really is involved with a one lane in each direction, there's going to be huge public outcry. That's alternative three. That's one of the alternatives that staff is giving us. Put the bike lanes in, but do it before the roadway surface is repaved. I don't know. That seems a little unusual that those proponents for alternative one are saying, well, if you put it in, make sure it's permanent. Don't let the public that hasn't been engaged to this point see what's actually going to happen. So that bothers me. Let me tell you about that. I think we're putting one over on the residents of Whiting Woods, of the Montro Shopping Park Association, their members, of Sycamore Woods, of Oakmont Woods, the members of the CV Chamber of Commerce. This wasn't a landslide, folks. Someone called it a slam dunk. This isn't a slam dunk, although it is about two to one, and I can clearly tell from the emails that I got, there was a very concerted organizational effort by the proponents of alternative one. And they all kind of had that same theme. We want alternative one, but don't let the council put the temporary program in, because when they see what that really involves, there's going to be outcry. So that's my problem, folks. This isn't, you know, a typical road. This is a major arterial leading to the 210 freeway, all the way down to Glendale Community College and to our, to our city center, if you follow it all the way down. There's a large road network. Now, some of the speakers that did come, I have the map right here, and you are impacted from Urquidez, from Malafia Drive. You don't have any option but to get down to Locust Center to get your kids to school. But for most everyone else, you've got all sorts of very quiet residential streets, Sunview, Valverde, Sierra Vista, Broadview. Poor folks on Sycamore, I see what you're saying. Here it is. Cloud Avenue down and take Sycamore all the way across till you get to Locust Center. I feel sorry for you. You're not as well organized as, obviously, the folks that like to bike. I just don't think it's the right road to, to eliminate through traffic. If there was a way to put a bike lane in and keep those two lanes in each direction, fine. I'm okay with that. But reducing it to one lane in each direction, I think that's a mistake. When people see it, there's going to be an outcry. The only thing I can say is my name won't be on the, the list of those who voted aye for it. And we'll see about that Metro stuff. I'll double-check on that. I would hate that money to be lost. That would really be a problem for, for us.
Councilmember Brannan?
Okay. Well, put my name down for aye, because I would be proud to support this. I am proud to support this. I do think it's straightforward. I do think it's a slam dunk. The reason people didn't want option three is because it would cost $750,000 and delay us probably a year and a half from doing something that we actually called out in the 2012 bicycle plan over 10 years ago, and we also identified in the 2017 pedestrian plan, and we are only now getting around to actually doing it. So we talk about safety. We talk about slowing speeds and improving road safety, and that was one of the council's four priorities for this year. We also talk about environment and reducing our carbon emissions, another one of our top priorities. We need to deliver on these fine words that come out of our mouths by actually putting some money down and doing the work and making the community safer, and I believe very much that this will reduce accidents. I don't think, given the low traffic counts on this road, that we will see much impact on congestion. I don't anticipate there will be a lot of cut-through. However, if there is, we have a very robust toolkit to be able to handle that, so I don't think that's a worry. And I will be the first, or maybe not the first, I think we'll probably all be the first, to, to say that we are willing to put money down to put in whatever is needed, speed humps, or turn restrictions, or whatever other treatments staff identifies to take care of any cut-through, which I don't really anticipate it's going to be a major issue. This whole thing about collectors and arterials, you know, this, this is, this is really very outdated. This is, this comes from suburban street planning concepts that don't make sense in an urban environment, and I have a great book, which I will give to any of my council colleagues, called Walkable Cities. I have another great book called Suburban Nation, and it will explain how we've gone wrong by introducing these roadway, these suburban and rural roadway concepts into our cities. We've made our cities dangerous, unwalkable, unbikable, and it's time to change. I do have a vested interest, because I do bike, and I rarely drive, and I bike on this segment. I bike in the shadows. Shadows, somebody said they're not worth the, the paint that's used to, to make them. A lot of people call them praros, because you're praying that the cars actually see you in the roadway. And I've had many people pass me within a few feet. I've had people honk me, give me the finger. You know, we need, as bicyclists, we need a protected and safe way to get around. There's so much more I could have said, but, but the community, all the people that called in really said it well. I do want to thank the people that, that came. There were a lot of new faces. You know, lots of times, we see the same people coming, and it was really amazing to see all these people that, that I've never seen before, and all these names I've never heard before, and particularly people that live in the area, people that are going to be directly affected by this. So I do appreciate all of that. Let's see. I also would really like staff to figure out how we do protected, how we make these bike lanes protected, if we can protect them by through, by putting them on the opposite side of the parking or whatever, but, but please do what you can to make these protected bike lanes. And I think that's it. Let me just look at my notes here. Yeah, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for everyone who has stuck through the end of our discussion. I have to be honest with you, everyone here. I don't particularly care for the style of bike lanes in option one. I don't care about the style of bike lanes in option two. I prefer to see actual separated, physically separated bike lanes for bicyclists anywhere, because quite honestly, I think that paint doesn't stop cars, and it's, it, it may be nice for optics, but I don't think it'll be necessarily effective for safety. I'm familiar with this stretch of road because I lived in Spar Heights. When I was going to college, I was living at home. My parents still live in the area. In fact, they're neighbors right across the street from Mr. Gallagher. I'm very familiar with the road conditions in the area and how people use the roads in, in that community. And, you know, to, to quote Pogo, "We have met the enemy, and it is us." I think everyone is guilty, at one point, of driving carelessly or not as carefully as we can in those neighborhoods, and we all have a responsibility to our children that we see here, to our neighbors, to everyone, to be more cautious. Now, I agree with the caller who said that we won't get people out of their cars, and you're right. The goal here isn't to get you out of your cars. The goal is to have you drive in a more sane and respectable fashion, which currently doesn't happen, and you can stand on any of the streets up there and, and notice that. Mr. Murphy, for whom I have great respect, because we've had many conversations during my coffee hours in Montro's, and I think he raises some very good points. The folks I've spoken to, even the ones who are very concerned about what the impact of the proposal from staff will be, we all agree on one thing, whether you're fully on board, or you're bullish on option one, or you're kind of tepid, or you, you may not care for it at all. Everyone, everyone in Locust Center and the northern part of our city agrees that something has to be done about the speeds at which people drive, and even Mr. Murphy is agreeing. We can all agree on that. The question is what? How do we do it? Now, in passing and talking to the city manager, I had made the suggestion that, you know, maybe we put K rails down, or maybe we put temporary barriers to see how this is going to function, because if we can prove that it will actually slow people down, then we can have a more permanent fix for the neighborhood. And of course, that came back with this price tag of $750,000, which is astronomical. I don't want to get into it and start slicing and dicing and investigating as to where that cost will be, but I will take staff at their word, and it seems like it's pretty, it was 700, right? It was $750,000. But the reason I, I had made the suggestion, and I think I set off a firestorm about that, is because there has been a history of, you know, some engineering decisions that have not always worked to the benefit or to the favor of people in Locust Center. Most notably, the median welcome to infamous, now infamous Glendale, welcome to Glendale road sign comes to mind. That kept getting hit and being put back up, and then hit again, and then being put back up, until finally, someone had the good sense to say, okay, this is not necessarily the best place to put a sign or the type of sign to place, and was removed. The always crosswalk in the Montro Shopping Park, which, you know, seemed like a great idea, and we thought it would work just as it did by the Americana, and no sooner had we put it in that we had to come. And I did not, I was not around during the Verdugo Road Lane Reduction. I don't know if that was...
You experienced it.
Yeah. Trust me. Yeah, well, maybe, but I will tell you this, as a parent raising a young child in this city, as someone who attempts occasionally to brave the roads on a bicycle, I will say that, the point is here, this is not about bike safety as much as it is about slowing people down. Bike safety will be a benefit, perhaps, of it, but the fact is, and everyone, as I said, agrees on this, we have to do something to slow people down. I was of the mindset at one point that it's better to move people around the city as quickly as possible, and to get from one end of the city as same, at the same speed and as quickly as we did 15 or 20 years ago, but we're seeing that now, that comes with a price, and the price is, can be, can be very serious, can be fatal, and we have to do something to just pump the brakes, pun, pun intended, and, and let people take a moment to slow down. So anyways, I had suggested the temporary project as a way of trying to measure twice and cut once. At the end of the day, I think that, you know, if we do try this, and we keep an eye on it, and we monitor it, we'll see if it actually slows people down, and if it has the impact that we hope it does. But as someone who, again, drives that stretch of road probably three times a week when I go see my folks, when I have time to go see my folks, sorry, folks, mom and dad, but when I do, people drive incredibly fast along that stretch, especially on the side where you have that basin and the golf course, and there's really nothing, I guess visually or physically to break that stretch up. People will use it like it is the Autobahn, and there's a school right across the street from it. And I feel very worried and scared for the kids who go to school there, and for Ben who spoke about it, and others. Kudos to you for having the courage and come up and speak about it. I, I am concerned. So I also take to heart a lot of the concerns that Councilmember Najarian has raised. He's developed quite a bit of expertise in transportation through his many years and over decade of service to the city, and I understand that, but I think that I would rather err on the side of caution, and if slowing things down may cause initially slight inconvenience that we can hopefully mitigate, but will save lives and tell folks that, hey, there's no rush. Plan better. Plan better, you know, get out of the house earlier, do what you have to do. I think that we will all be better served. So I will be cautiously supporting option one as well. And I'll tell you, sometimes, you know, I don't want us to ignore the folks on Sycamore and the folks who spoke out with concerns, because people know what will work and what won't work in their neighborhoods. I know that at the corner of Valverde and Roseland, there was no stop sign, and people would zip through it. When the neighbors asked for a stop sign, my folks being one of them, the city said the traffic counts do not warrant a stop sign. And everyone said, no, we need a stop sign. Trust us, it'll make a difference. Finally, the city relented, and that stop sign has been a godsend for the people in that neighborhood. I think, you know, in fact, if we had more stop signs, it would cause people to drive more carefully versus zipping through these neighborhoods. So whether it's speed humps, speed bumps, stop signs, whatever it takes to slow people down, I think will be helpful for everyone. And hopefully, it doesn't take when folks, maybe on the side streets, feel the impacts of this, which hopefully there won't be, but if they are, it will not take a year to address their concerns and put up the stop signs and the speed humps and whatever is necessary to give them the peace of mind as well. It should not be an either/or proposal, all right? We should be able to do it all. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll motion for option one.
Option one. Motion has been made for option one.
Second.
Second has been made. Yes. Councilmember Brotman.
I just want to see if I could get the motion amended to include a protected bike lane in both directions, or at least a strong consideration for a protected bike lane, physically protected.
Would we be able to do that?
Weren't there, Kate?
You know, all this is about green...
Right. Mayor Kusakian, Member of City Council, conceptually, yes, but please allow our engineers to go take a look, to make sure that it's feasible, physically possible to do, as well as perhaps let you know what the cost impact's going to be.
I mean, I would be inclined to support that. I will say, though, biking in La Cressenta, it is a healthy person's, you know, endeavor. I have tried to bike from Glendale College to my folks' place in Spar Heights once, once, and realized that I need to get in better shape.
But, Mr. Mayor...
But I do think, I know, we build in, more people will bike and...
No, no, electric bike. Electric bike.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay. So, yeah, I would prefer to see a protected bike lane. Or, let me ask Mr. Organesson. Great presentation, thank you, by the way. Is there anywhere in the states or in the public works community where the green bike lane is reversed with the parking lane or the parking area? Can it be closer to the curb? Can it be the green lane and then parking?
Mayor Kusakian, yes, we are actually looking into the protected bike lane option as part of this project, as I indicated in my presentation, and we will be looking at a curb-running bike lane primarily. And at our 90% design, we'll have those options set out.
So they'll be reversed, the bike lane and the parking lane?
Correct.
Versus how it is on Sonora, where it is almost a religious endeavor to bike on that and hope that you're not hit. All right. So do you accept Councilmember Brotman's amendment? Okay, amended and seconded. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmembers, Kusakian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Mayor Kusakian?
Yes. Thank you.[846.82][846.82](APPLAUSE) Let's hope for the best, folks. Thank you for coming. Have a good evening.
If we're going to change that configuration, which was not in any of the drawings, shouldn't the folks who live on La Cressenta Avenue, who have parking in front of their house, have been notified of this?
I'm sorry.
So point of order, Mr. Mayor. The amendment, well, I'm not sure who, perhaps your amendment.
No, it was Councilmember Brotman's, and then seconded by a council member, or she accepted the amendment. I think it was direction to look into considering protected bike lanes.
Yes.
And that could be with the...
I mean, if I lived on La Cressenta Avenue, and all of a sudden my car is a lot closer to the traffic, and there's a bike lane in front of my house, I would have wanted to know and had a voice in this discussion. That's all I want to say.
That's a great point, a valid point, and we'll definitely do the outreach with the residents and property owners on La Cressenta Avenue. That'll be part of the process.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is Action Item C, City Attorney, regarding findings regarding approval of Design Review Case Number PDR 2101078 for a three-story, 82-room hotel at 1633 Victory Boulevard. One, resolution adopting a subsequent mitigated negative declaration and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Two, motion sustaining the Design Review Board's decision to approve the Design Review case and making findings in support thereof.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move eight, C1 and two.
Okay.
I'll second.
There's been a second, and before we go to a vote, and I appreciate everyone being kind enough to wait for me to be back in town to vote on this item, I do want to get some clarification. So I see that Mr. Desai is here. Mr. Desai, when we had this item before us and we voted on it, we spoke afterwards about the size of the project, as to what the considerations were, what the project could be like if there was less of a parking requirement. I talked to staff about that. You had mentioned to me, and I don't know if this is the appropriate place, and you had mentioned this during the hearing as well, so is it okay to ask for clarification?
I think that's a clarifying question, as long as it's not new evidence.
New evidence is clarifying. But you had referenced that this was, the room count was what you said was needed specifically for the attraction of a certain quality or brands of hotels that were being considered. Can you please clarify that for me?
Yes. So not only is it required for certain brands to gain their interest, but in addition to that, I'm not going to be able to get construction financing unless we have a global brand on board. Typically, banks are not going to give you a large sum of money to construct a hotel without a reservation system. So it's, not only do we need a brand on board, but we need a lender on board, and the lender's only going to come on board if a brand's going to come on board.
So what brands are interested in this right now? What brands are we referring?
So Hilton has about 20 brands. Marriott has about 20 brands. We're speaking to both of those entities. We also engage Cambria as well. They haven't provided us a letter of intent as of yet, but we are talking only to the major brands. Because as I mentioned, to secure construction financing, I'm going to have to have a signed franchise agreement prior to a lender providing me financing for this project.
Okay. And that is, so for me, you know, one of my concerns is getting confirmation for that. And I asked staff. Staff said that they don't have confirmation. The reason why, part of the reason why I support the increase in room count is because having a brand-name hotel, for me, is important in supporting the project, because the brand-name hotels have requirements for upgrades, have upkeep. It will be a better-maintained property versus it being a standalone construction that would be held privately and could change hands, and possibly at some point fall into neglect or disrepair. But staff, let me ask Mr. Calvert, we do not have confirmation as to this explanation of the room count construction. I mean, how does that comport to any of your staff's research or information that you have?
We've started to do some investigation, but we can also require a private developer to ensure that a certain tenant will be there. That's something that's not within our purview. We can't do that with our land use or zoning code. As you know, we're looking at that with the downtown specific plan, in terms of the moratorium, in terms of that kind of caliber of hotel, but with this, we are not capable of requiring a certain tenant to be there.
Okay. And at what point can we ask for, as a driveway is built, for there to be something designed into the project that would not allow, or that would discourage people turning right or using the alleyway to then spill? We just had a whole discussion right now about people using side streets as cut-throughs and as alternatives. Is it possible to do that at the staff level after the approval of this? Mr. City Attorney and Mr. Calvert, what do we have authority to do?
Mr. Mayor, my suggestion, because the hearing's closed, is to, if that's a concern, to address it as a concern with CDD staff and ask them to look into it and see what can be done in that regard, but not make it as a subsequent condition of approval.
Okay.
I just want to make this clear. So this gentleman could tell us that the Ritz Carlton was coming in, and we couldn't do anything about it if they didn't. We can't make that a condition, that we know what hotel is coming in there?
Councilmember Devine, that's correct. So the project is judged pursuant to the zoning code and pursuant to the design guidelines. We're going to have this discussion regarding downtown because there are different incentives that might be offered, but for what we have for this project, it's the zoning code, the design guidelines. The design guidelines are based on what is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and what are the other design criteria in there. So it's not a criteria that can be used to assess the project.
Okay. I'm going to, and I'll make this comment now, that unless there's a change to the conditions, including reinstating condition number one pertaining to mass scale, et cetera, I'll be voting no on this project.
You already did vote no, didn't you?
Yes, but we're going to vote tonight, so I'm just going to reiterate.
I wouldn't expect you to change your vote.
Well, unless somebody would want to change and include...
But herein lies the challenge, right?
No, absolutely not.
Herein lies the challenge. The gentleman before us has said that the major hotel brands have a certain room number requirement. Anything less than that, potentially, although the massing, I understand, is a concern to the neighbor and has been raised as an issue, but let's be frank, if this gentleman is unable to secure the financing to build the hotel, and very few people, by the way, building anything in this market, in this volatile market with the cost of materials, et cetera, have the ability to self-finance, everything is financed, there's construction loans in other parts of it, which I don't know how many people are familiar with or work in this space to understand, then there's a potential of an inferior product versus a brand-name hotel coming in. And the alternative, one of the alternatives is if it's not the three-story, 80-room hotel, with the density bonuses, and thanks to our friends in Sacramento, we will be potentially looking at a five-story residential structure with all the families and people in there. I'm just hoping that Councilmember Devine is clear on that aspect of it.
No parking.
With no parking requirements. Okay.
May I make a comment? Yeah. I voted no. I could potentially support the project, but here's the thing, a lot of the discussion did kind of, you know, come around to this question of the room requirement, right? You know? And I know, Mr. Nan, you, you know, made the representation that you need a certain number of rooms to be able to attract one of these brands. And, you know, we've met, and we've talked, and I know you're a serious person, and I respect what you say, but I think, given our role here, we really need to do some due diligence on that. We really need ourselves to at least be able to, you know, verify that that is, in fact, the case in the marketplace. Now, I know we can't require that they get a certain brand and all that kind of thing, but I think staff could and should be able to tell us whether they agree that that is the case. And if that is, you know, if that's what comes back, and, you know, I hear from another source, from staff, that yes, that really is the situation, then, you know, I would agree that, you know, this is something that we should support. But I'm just a little uncomfortable, you know, changing my view on the basis of just a statement that, you know, this is the room count that's required. I very much wanted, besides that first condition, I mean, I think the thing that probably was most important to me was that there be some kind of an amenity, like a restaurant, coffee shop, something that would be accessible to the community. I really didn't like when I heard that, you know, that there was going to be this shop, but no, nobody is, you're not welcome to come in and use it. I know that doing that requires design changes. I knew you would lose some rooms. And that's where I started thinking about, you know, is there a way? Is there a way we can kind of work something out so that we can do that?
Let me turn to Mr. Garcia, who maybe wants to jump in and clarify.
If I could. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, again, just to reiterate for the council, the primary guiding force in terms of this decision is whether or not the project's consistent with the design guidelines. And so, you know, I would advise the council to focus on that. I think the discussion, there was a good discussion the last time we had this discussion about it. The council had different views of it, but I don't think there was a right or wrong answer. I just think it's how you feel about the consistency. The other thing I was going to say is related to this question of whether the hotel will need a brand to get financed. I'm not, you know, I'm not sure how staff's going to be able to verify that. I think, I can tell you, having worked on projects before, I think, yeah, generally speaking, construction financiers are going to require a brand. That's been our experience when we've worked with, you know, on our hotel developments, when we used to have redevelopment agencies. So that's, the answer to that question generally is yes. Whether we're going to be, whether this project is going to need to get that brand before finance, I can't answer that unless their people are willing to talk to us.
Right.
So that's kind of where we're at. So I would just provide the information to you as well, for the purpose of making a decision.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, it's not whether they require a brand to get the financing, it's whether the brands require this minimum room count in order to be willing to sign on. That's really the question. And I think that's a question that, you know, a few phone calls to some of the brands could answer.
And, Mr. Mayor, and City Council, in that regard, it's not as straightforward as what appears to be phone calls, because we don't have that relationship with the brands, hotel brands. We have to, staff has to do market analysis and make a lot of assumptions as opposed to direct contact with these hotel brands. Without a specific project on hand, I don't believe we can get that straight answer.
Well, let me ask Mr. Desai this. You had a very, I think, favorable to your position outcome a few weeks ago. So you had the council indicate that it was supportive of your assertion about the room increase. How close are you to securing an agreement with a major brand, or what can you provide this council, and in what period of time, to give us the comfort level and assurance that we can have that there is a major brand on, you know, on hand to work with you?
So a few weeks ago, there was a representative from Hilton that was actually present. He was here since six o'clock. I've been working with him for the past year. His name is Sean Tan. We've had a voluminous number of discussions with Hilton specifically. You're putting me in a position right now where I have to, the brands that I'm negotiating, I'm negotiating with a number of brands, they're probably watching this, and you're putting me in a position where I have to tell you who's the leading horse in the race right now. And for something that's not relevant or required, but as a courtesy, I will answer that question, even though it would probably hurt my ability to continue my negotiations. That's most beneficial to me.
Well, we don't need to know. I don't want you to lay out your cards right now with everyone, but I think that, I think for council's sake, you know, we're taking you at your word, right? So we don't, we're not asking you to tell us all the brands, but we also want to be able to be certain that we're supporting the right project for the community. This isn't about, you know, a couple of vociferous individuals who may have an objection to it, because I think it's very clear that most people, even I think my colleague, Councilmember Devine, agree that a hotel would be welcomed, changed to the empty gas station, shuttered gas station use that's there now.
So just to clarify further, there's no, I can almost assure you, based on my 20 years of experience in hospitality, there's, I don't think there's been a single hotel that's gone in the last... that's gone in the last 10, that's gone up in the last 10 years in this 10-mile radius of our city that's non-branded. I think, it, it, it doesn't make sense for a owner, it doesn't make sense for a lender to invest that kind of money into a project that's not going to have a central reservation, a global reservation system. Secondly, in terms of what, just to clarify what Councilmember Brotman brought up, I'm going, this, this, this project requires two levels of subterranean parking. That's an incredibly expensive endeavor. And I don't think we've ever had a building in Glendale, a hotel building, that's only 80 rooms with two levels of subterranean parking. So, I hope that provides some kind of historical record, even though, you know, I don't, I don't have the, the math in front of me, but.
Right. If I could, I mean, that's, that's one of the things that struck me is you at the Design Review Board hearing, you said that, you made a comment that you expect something like 80% of your clientele to come by ride share, not to come in their own vehicle, a rental vehicle or their own vehicle. And so, I started thinking, if it's, if that's true, I don't know if that's true, what the basis of that is, but if that's true, why are you building two levels of subterranean parking? That's a lot of costs. And if, and if that cost can be reduced, then maybe we can get some other things that...
Mr. Mayor, I have to object. Mr. City Attorney, what are we doing here? I don't think we've subjected any developer, perhaps except Rick Caruso, whom, with whom we had a development agreement with, to this type of scrutiny. And, I mean, those who didn't support the project, let them not support the project. We're asking for more testimony. The hearing has been closed. We're trying to redesign it. Now, we're talking about, I guess, Mr. Brotman saying, do less parking and do less rooms and let the finances work out.
Let's allow the City Attorney to...
Let's, I mean, where are we, Mr. Referee?
Mayor and Council, again, my, my, my point was to try to have the council take action on the project or, or ask for, or ask for a continuance so that we can get the, the information you wanted. That would require us to re-notice and reopen the hearing and allow, you know, Mr. Desai to speak, to allow the other appellant to speak. So, that's an option if you want to do that, or you can just do it based on the record here today. Or you can continue it so you can deliberate further. Those are, those are the options. I, I do, I am starting to get a little nervous about the amount of information we're trying to solicit from Mr. Desai right now.
Okay.
We, we've already had the discussion on this item. This is a by-right project. Mr. Desai, have you taken...
Yeah, just to answer your question, Councilmember Brotman, that 80%, the reason why I have two levels of subterranean parking is to comply with Glendale's code, which requires 80% parking multiplied by the number of rooms. So, I'm providing that exact number of parking to the City of Glendale to comply with the code and to remain by right. But, yes, I've been on this for five years. I've gone through five DRBs. My office is across the street. I'm a 30-year resident in Glendale. I'm not going anywhere. I've got five businesses in the City of Glendale, six, including my law firm.
Uh, what were you...
No, I was just going to address that the project does comply with code, but it is a discretionary decision because a design review is a discretionary decision. So, it's been the council's purview to approve the project or approve it with conditional conditions.
Well, so here's my issue, right? I do not want to have this gentleman go through an entire, you know, I mean, he's gone through a number of processes to get to where he is today. I mean, I have issues with why, you know, the parking requirement is a totally different set of issues, right? This has nothing to do with hearing. We can have that separate discussion. Because quite honestly, almost every single hotel in this city you go to and you go into the parking lot, they're not all parked to the max. Like, in fact, the Hilton parks classic cars on a couple of its levels because it's over required with parking for the types of guests that are using it. So, I apologize that you had to design that, but then staff should come to us and say, "Look, guys, you know, hotels and hotel uses are changing. Let's reconsider how we're requiring parking to be done." That's a separate discussion. And I don't want the gentleman to go through all the way back to the, send him all the way back to the starting, to go through this process. Bless you. But I do want to also have assurance that the project that we're providing in this community is a project that's deserving of the neighborhood, right? And I've, we had this discussion. I've told you how I feel about this design versus previous designs, and I think I even mentioned it during the deliberation. But that aside, my other concerns have to do with making sure that this is going to be a high-quality project for the neighborhood and for the community and for the patrons and for the businesses in the area. And so, I have that responsibility as well. If that means like I have, you know, we wait a week to get some other assurance from Mr. Desai, sure, then why not? But if it's worth doing, it's worth doing right.
I'm, I'm not sure what any other assurance can be. I don't know how that's relevant. The point is, I'm not sure how his assurances regarding management is relevant to our jurisdiction and authority as a design review entity. I think, I think, let him say, "Well, I'm not going to give you that info," and then we're going to say, then, then it's off. We're going to have a writ of mandate faster than, than we could shake a stick at. I mean, his next, his next option is to take us to court on a very, I think, would be very good grounds. I mean, what are we talking about? Who runs it? How it's run has nothing to do with what was before us. And to consider anything else would be improper and beyond the scope of our duties. Clearly, we have, we want to make, to make it a good hotel.
Councilmember Najari, I will say this. I understand the scope of duties. I've also sat in that chair over there while this council has approved designs for hotels that then, when they were built, looked completely different than they were built, that were initially approved by this council.
That's a different story.
So, to talk about design jurisdiction and how, well, to me, it's, call me semi ignorant on these issues of a design review. I'm learning as I go along in spite of my decade of having sit here and watch councils make decisions, but I'd like to have an assurance that we're providing quality product. And part of the way we ensure that we have a quality product is making sure that we have a good operator. I know Mr. Desai wants to do that, but I also want to make sure that we have something that we can tell the community and we can tell ourselves afterwards that it was the best product we could provide.
Mayor Najari, Mayor Kusakian, if I may.
Sure.
Mr. Desai actually noted that he's not going to be able to get the funding without the brand. So, does it matter to you what brand it is?
I mean, the specific brand doesn't matter, but I do want to make sure that it's of a certain class. We talk about three-star hotels, we talk about four-star hotels, and, you know, he has told me that the 80-room requirement is in order to secure a specific or a specific cadre of hotels, style of hotels. I mean, otherwise, it's also increasing his cost of construction, right? To build more rooms, to add more massing, to add another level. And again, I want to say that I, I support the idea of a hotel. I just need to be certain that that is the case.
We can't tie that into our decision as a design review entity. We can't.
Right.
Mr., can we, Mr. City Attorney, throw the flag or correct me if I'm wrong?
Let me answer it this way, Councilmember Najari. You're correct. That's not a, that's not a criteria upon which you can base a decision. So, that's, I, that's why I'm advising the council to do it based on the record before you. The only thing I'll say to that, though, is, is respectfully, the applicant did open the door at the last hearing saying he needed this size project to move forward. So, I think there's a, there is a basis to ask the question, but I don't think at the end of the day, the council's going to have to rely on the design guidelines to, to approve or deny the project. And then another option, again, and I know it's not, doesn't seem like where it headed, is to approve the project with that condition that was originally proposed by DRB. But that, obviously, that's not the project he applied for. So, that's, from his perspective, that's going to be, I guess, perceived as a denial, so, in fairness to him.
And that's condition number one, which is the reason that I'm not approving the project.
Can there be a side agreement prepared? Side, that's not part of the DRB, but it is between Mr. Desai and the city in which he commits to a whatever level national brand, and that if he does not keep that, then he's liable for damages or put a liquidated damages clause in it?
Councilmember Najari, we, we could look at that. I'd have some concerns about the enforceability of such a contract. We can certainly, as part, if the council were to move forward with the project as it, the motion currently stands to prove it without condition one, you can ask staff to follow up on, on the branding of the hotel and provide information as quickly as possible. But, you know, again, it can't be a condition of the project and, and, as I've said a couple of times now, it has to be based on the design guidelines and the zoning code.
At what point can, can this Design Review Board reverse its decision?
Well, again, so...
Until he makes a...
Well, once...
Reliance, an act of reliance, correct?
Oh, so if the council actually approved the project...
Say we approve it and we say, "If you come back in a week with this information, who's ever giving it, we're cool. If not, we can have a motion to reconsider or to rescind."
I'd have, I would have to look at that. That would be a unique circumstance. I'd be a little concerned about that from the, the due process perspective. Again, if that's really the holdup, the one option is for council to continue the item so that we can try to track down this information, provide the council a level of comfort. It's not my recommendation. My recommendation is to, to make a decision based on the record, I think.
Well, I, I would like for you to look into that and provide me the information. And so, if that means like one more week, I think that we're almost there. And if, if it's moving down the path that's moving, it should not be a problem to get the information that we need for that, whatever the clarifications are.
You're kind of the...
I mean, what is the alternative? If I abstain, that counts as a no vote, right?
Correct. And then it just gets continued to, to next week, so...
How would it get continued to next week?
I'm assuming, I'm assuming two councilmembers are going to vote yes and two councilmembers are going to vote no. That'd be a tie. So, per our charter, that will just come back week to week until council makes a decision. Another option is, is you can make a substitute motion to continue it for a month so we can get this information.
Would it take a month to get the information?
It would take, if you're requiring additional information, one of my other concerns as I raised was the issue of noticing and providing, providing a new notice for the hearing because you're, you're asking for new information. You're asking for new information to be considered.
We're not opening a hearing again.
No, come on now.
So, this is, this is, this is the problem I have in, in terms of, you know, just this whole process is that you're saying because of the clarification that I require that was raised during the hearing, that when we had this discussion, that it would either take a month or reopen the hearing and, and take this person all the way to starting point A.
I, I wouldn't say it's starting point A. It's, it's a hearing, but we would bring it back and the staff presentation would be...
But it would have to be noticed.
Would have to be noticed.
And it would be 30 days at least, right?
It takes about 15 days to do the notice from beginning to end.
Tell me what staff can do without having it trigger this whole process that's going to, again, reopen a whole nother set of discussions and I think points that I don't think are necessarily pertinent to the, the goal that we're trying to get to.
To get new, again, the, the trigger is the new information. That's the problem. You're asking for the new information. That's what triggers the hearing. The other option is to move forward with the approval, but direct staff to, to, you know, verify the branding of the hotel as soon as possible, provide that information to the council. I apologize that there's not, there are not better options, but, you know...
How, how soon is that? Again, how soon would we be able to know that? What is the things that we can...
Can we even know that?
Mr. Mayor, it all depends on Mr. Desai's progress of negotiation with the operator, right? And, and I don't know how long that's...
That, that could take months, but we've invested a lot of money in construction drawings already once we got approved. So, we've hired all the engineers. The construction drawings are, are in progress right now since we got an approval two, three weeks ago. So, we've hired about nine engineers since then.
Right. So, as soon as we get an indication of an operator name, we can do the verification.
How are interest rates going, by the way, in the next, you know, month or two months?
When we started this project, the construction loan was going to be 4%. Now, it's going to be somewhere on 8.5% because of the delays on a by-right project.
Even though you're a developer and we're not supposed to like developers, you're a businessman and I think that's an unnecessary cost that you're being hit with.
If I could, I mean, another option is to, we have, we have a consultant that works for the city that advises us on hotel projects, just, and they can, we can have them verify the general proposition that, that hotel, hotel financing requires a brand. And with the branding, you don't necessarily, you might not need to then verify who the brand is because he'll know he will not be able to get financing without the brand.
How long would it take that person to get that information for us?
A week.
Okay.
But again, we have the notice. It's new information. That's, you know...
We can't reopen the hearing.
I, I, so my frustration is this. I've asked this question. All it would have taken is for us to get this information from this person. I don't know if it would have even been any type of transgression against the processes because I just asked the question. I expected an answer, and that's all. And now I'm being told that we can get that answer, but it'll take a week. And what's the difference between me getting that answer off the street versus getting it from whoever city has hired or making that inquiry myself? Like, it just, you know, I need clarification.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we can definitely get that information. It'll be in general terms, not specific to any operator or brand. We have to obviously ask our consultant, but the point here is that we have to reopen the public hearing because it's new information.
I don't relish opening, reopening, just...
Neither do I. Neither do I.
I, I don't want to reopen it either, but why is that new information if this was discussed during the hearing?
Councilmember Brotman, so it was discussed, it was provided, but we didn't have, you're asking staff to go back and find additional information and present that to the council. It's new information. It, you know, before it was, you know, for lack of a better term, it was a testimony and an assertion by the applicant. You're asking for staff to verify that, that that's new information.
I think we should just vote on the findings, on the MND, and give Mr. Desai hell if it doesn't turn out to be a branded project.
I mean, you say you agree. You're going to vote no on it anyway, so...
I mean, that's...
It's up to you. It's two to two. It's your vote that counts.
Well, my vote is, my opinion was of I'd like to get the information and the verification that I, that would give me the level of comfort to support a decision that I made last week out of the sympathy that I feel for this gentleman who's gone this far. Now, everyone is making out, you're talking about four to 8% as though, you know, one week of information verification would make a difference. And I'm being told that verifying information that was presented at the hearing, so I can cast the vote that I feel comfortable casting, would trigger a reopening of the hearing. Correct?
That's correct. Again, I mean, the hearing was closed, council made a decision.
I mean, I guess it comes down to credibility. Is there any reason that any of us know why we shouldn't believe Mr. Desai at his word? Has he... Do you have a criminal record?
Absolutely not.
Okay, no, that's credibility. That's credibility. Are you in any code enforcement procedures on any of your other hotels?
I'm a resident of Glendale for 30 years. I still live there.
Are you under any code enforcement, forward investigations in any other hotel?
I'm a former government employee for 13 years.
Then there's no reason why we shouldn't believe him and...
I, I really object to a person who lives in our city to be asked these questions.
You're trying to prove his credibility.
Now, as councilmembers, let me tell you something. I know Mr. Desai has been a dedicated public servant, right? I don't know how many people in the community know this, but he's been a public defender. I know that. This is not about his credibility. But if you want to ask a question, I can ask him. Have you run a brand-name hotel yet?
Yes, the Best Western, Best Western plus Glendale.
All right, so...
I've run it for 10 years and...
So, so the Best Western...
Wait, are you saying you're an officer of the court?
I am an officer of the court. I'm a practicing attorney.
Well, you certainly hit me where it counts.
Can you get staff information or how soon can it be?
It would have to be a new hearing.
It would have to be a new hearing.
There is a way, you said, to approve it.
No, he still said the new hearing.
And have us report, have staff report back to us as soon as it's been...
Yeah, my, my suggestion was approve the project and then staff will work to verify and get you the information, but the project will be approved at a time. But if you want the new information before making a decision, we will need to re-notice and reopen the hearing.
All right, well, if you guys want to have your motion and second and... All right, well, if you guys want to have your motion and second and vote, we can.
There's, Mr. Mayor, there's a motion and a second.
I'm aware of that. Thank you, yes.
Are there any callers?
Yeah, are there any callers on this side?
No callers, no cards.
Because everyone thought this was his done deal.
Anything Mr. Desai you would like to add before there's a roll call vote on this?
I've been working on this for five years. I'm in this by myself. I don't have a group of investors or anything. Obviously, I'm very dedicated to the success of this hotel. I'm taking on the liability of this construction loan on my own. So I have, and I'm, again, a resident for 30 years. My law firm is across the street. I have, I'm invested in this community. This corridor needs to improve. It's currently a dilapidated auto mechanic shop there. That's, I mean, an eyesore in the neighborhood. This project is going to be a catalyst for the city, for that area, for development, for good development in that area.
I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with that, but I want a good product, and I don't want, I want a new product, and I want something that will really make that corner shine. Go ahead, let's have the roll call.
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Robyn?
I guess I'll stick with my no for now.
Devine?
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kassakian?
I'm letting the tension build up. So if I abstain, it goes to next week?
Correct. It comes back automatically on the agenda. Council breaks the tie, or... But again, we wouldn't be able to provide you new information without renoticing here. But you can think about it, you can dwell on it for a week and come back and have the same discussion.
Or he can vote now.
I'm going to vote no. I'm going to wait from next week. Abstain, I'll abstain. And abstention, though, counts as a no, does it not?
Right, but abstention means it's a tie.
I abstain. I vote abstain. I can make a long list...
If you could please excuse me.
You are excused, and we can make a long list of times we've made mockeries of the public process in here, and we try to do the best we can. Have a good evening. All right, what's next on the agenda?
Next is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to appropriate department for investigation and report. We have two cards and one caller.
Ramella Iragi, you spoke during the, you spoke during the earlier portion, which was for three minutes. When you speak during the three-minute portion, you forego your ability to speak at the five-minute portion. Is this a specific issue, or do you want to express an opinion? Is it something that you could just speak to staff about afterwards?
No.
Okay. And I'm inclined to follow the rules and say that you won't be able to speak during the five-minute portion. Were you aware of this rule?
Okay. How many minutes?
You already gave up, because the three-minute portion is reserved to people who need to speak at the beginning of the meeting and aren't going to stay till the end, till the conclusion. I'll let you speak for five minutes now, but it's the only time I'll let you do it. You won't be able to do it next time. You pick either one or the other. Is that clear?
Right.
It's not a matter of whatever. It's the rules of the council chambers. All right, all right. I'm granting you some leeway with the five minutes. All right.
Okay, well, I'm discussing. I still don't get it. What is, when can I talk?
I'll be happy to explain to you again afterwards.
How many minutes can I talk? I still am confused.
You're going to speak for five minutes? Normally, if you speak in the beginning of the meeting during the three-minute portion...
It's already five minutes past.
No, it's not.
Why are we going to discuss that later? Actually, today, I was attending a housing authority meeting, and you talked about the $300 subsidy programs. I want to actually refresh your castle people memory, that the program was designed in 2019, and it had nothing to do with the COVID. And it was time that my late husband applied for that. We're not getting that $300. We denied that. And just, I want to refresh your memory, that it has nothing to do with the COVID, the $300. And that was designed to shift public mind from rent control program. Just refreshing.
Okay, thank you very much. That was easy. All right, next is Mr. Antranik Zadorian. You'll have five minutes. All right, Mr. Zadorian.
Is my counsel?
Sure, he'll have additional time because of translation. Please set the timer for 10 minutes. Go ahead.
He's on the waitlist for Section 8 from 2001. Yeah, it's 2001 year, that's waiting for the Section 8 voucher. And he hasn't heard anything from the city authorities? And he came to the council meeting like two weeks ago, and he mentioned his concern, concerns about, why is this not getting? Yeah, so they, okay, they took down his name, and then what? They referred him to the housing, and housing referred them to the Armenian Relief Society, where they offer, and they ask, this program is for homelesses. And as a matter of fact, yeah, that was his answer, and the city authority answered to her, to him, that, yeah, you have to be a homeless in order to get the... Does he look like a homeless? That's exactly the thing that I heard, that told me. They told me that you have to be homeless in order to get the voucher.
I understand, I understand that you want...
Shame on you, shame on you, shame on your staff.
Ma'am, you are taking Mr. Zadorian's time by speaking, so...
No, we have same concern.
If you'd like, I can translate for him, but you selected you as a translator.
The translation part is over. That's the same answer that I got here.
Mr. Zadorian, Rishbanu Nekeavilatsnalu? Rishbanu Nekeavilatsnalu?
Watch.
Okay, shank altsun.
Do we look like a homeless people?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. I will say, let me allow a moment to explain. I don't know if staff is here from our homeless services to answer that. There is a program where we partner with community organizations, where they provide emergency rapid housing to individuals who are homeless, because there is a homeless crisis. I understand that. And he is not homeless, which is why they said the program is for individuals who are homeless and who are unsheltered. That is why. Thank you very much. Councilmember Asatrian, go ahead.
I believe the gentleman last time had also noted that he's been on a waitlist since I don't know how that's possible. Can you, can staff look into this? Because that seems like, 20 years seems like a very long time to be on a waitlist. Something doesn't make sense here.
And I believe this gentleman was here before, so do we not have his contact information? Has someone from staff not reached out to him to figure out what the issues are? Because I know that sometimes if an individual has signed up in one place, they may have signed up at an individual location, but not necessarily for a specific program. And I do understand it can be confusing. But in terms of the information that was provided to the resident from the Armenian Relief Society, they were correct in saying what the program that they're partnered with the city is for.
It's waiting for Section 8.
Thank you, I understand.
I'm just asking staff to look into the waitlist.
Mr. Mayor, Member of City Council, Mr. Arjumian is taking the gentleman's contact information and address, and we'll look it up on our waiting list for Section 8.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, please do not speak out of turn, with all due respect, please. Thank you. We have two callers. Let's take the two callers, and then we'll call it an evening.
Yes.
No new callers.
Our first caller is Edwin. Edwin, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Good evening. How's everybody today?
We're well, Edwin. Thank you. Go ahead, you have five minutes.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to make a key announcement, because I've been busy working, but since you guys have the roll communication available, I'd like to. So October 29 and October 31, I just wanted to announce that we're going to be having a haunted house event in the Tungah area, which is on the border of Glendale, and it's located at 10039 Pinewood Avenue, Tungah, California, 91042. It'll be at the American Legion post, and the haunted house opens from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And I was wondering, what, did you pick out a Halloween costume this year, Mr. Kassakian?
My son told me I'm not allowed to dress up this year. It embarrasses him, so...
Hey, well, you're welcome to come to the haunted house. You guys are all welcome.
I'm fine, thank you.
Hey, you know, second thing I would like to also say is that you should tell your neighboring councilmember that's on the border, on the border next to Eagle Rock, Glendale border next to Eagle Rock, Councilmember Kevin DeLeon, you should tell that guy to resign, because he was caught on hidden recording making racist comments with Gil Sadio, Nuri Martinez. And you know what's interesting? Is that right now, there are a lot of protesters camping out in front of his house in Eagle Rock. And so I would suggest that you tell Kevin DeLeon and Gil to resign, because they're ruining the reputation of Democrats. Because for years, we've been taught for years that, we were told, oh, Republicans are racist, but the truth is racism exists in both political parties. And that's about it. And shame on all three of those Los Angeles councilmembers, because they have totally embarrassed, not just the Democrats in Glendale, but Democrats all over the US. Thank you very much.
Thank you, next caller.
Thank you. Our next caller is Diane Martin. Diane, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Thank you so much, and thank you for taking my call, Mayor. Very excited about meeting you and seeing all that you're going to do for our community. I am a 22-year resident of La Croseta and Mountain Oaks Park. I have served on the HOA for Mountain Oaks Park as secretary. I've called in many times. I've been very interested in our community and its causes, and several times have called in regarding Mountain Oaks and the closed sessions, was told that we would be given access to some of that information as homeowners, not only taking care of the park, but affiliated to the park. Once again, I petition to have, that the homeowners of Mountain Oaks Park have access to what's going on in the closed sessions, and a courtesy to let us know things. Mayor, thanks for visiting Mountain Oaks a couple of weeks ago. Just appreciated that, but I am once again the voice of the park, asking to have inclusion in this and not exclusion.
Thank you very much. If there are no other callers, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, nice. Thank you.
Thank you.